Go ahead and call this meeting to order.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Don Kapoff, Chaplain with the Orange County Sheriff Department.
Please stand and after Don gives our invocation, would you please remain standing while Dan Bane leads us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, as we enter into our holiday season, we want you to know that we are so thankful, ever mindful of how much you've blessed us with our lives, with our families, with our homes in this beautiful city that we call home. We thank you so much for all you've given us, and yet, Father, we ask for more, that during this season and the upcoming years, that our children will be safe, our grandchildren will be safe, free from harm, free from evil, that you continue to pour your blessings upon each and every person of the city and all the families that are represented here. We love you, we thank you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Is the flag and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance ready to begin?
Pledge of Allegiance, take the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call. Councilmember Ferguson? Here. Councilmember Hamm? Councilmember Ward? Mayor Patam Bane? Mayor Swartz? First item on the agenda is a holiday serenade by the 5th grade choir students from Truman Benedict, Marblehead, Vista Del Mar, Concordia, and Las Palmas Elementary School, under the direction of choir teacher Sharon Evans.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Evans, and I teach 4th and 5th grade music in the San Clemente area for the Capistrano Unified School District. I would like to thank the Honorable Steve Swartz, Mayor, and members of the City Council for inviting select 5th grade choir students from the schools that were mentioned to perform some holiday music. I would also like to acknowledge the principals, staff, and parents, as well as the CUSD VAP coordinator for their support. We would like to sing for you, "O Argo de Navidad," Holiday of Music, here we come in caroling, "La Navidad," "Se Vivon," and "Winter Fantasy." We hope that you enjoy our program.
(Singing) O argo de navidad, muy verdes son sus ramas. O argo de navidad, muy verdes son sus ramas. Son verdes en el verano, también en el invierno. O argo de navidad, muy verdes son sus ramas. Oh Christmas tree, oh Christmas tree, how very green your branches. Oh Christmas tree, oh Christmas tree, how very green your branches. They're buried in the summertime, and also in the wintertime. Oh Christmas tree, oh Christmas tree, how very green your branches. Muy verdes son sus ramas. It's a holiday of music, it's a holiday of song. It's a holiday of singing, listening, playing along. It's a holiday of music, do your very best to hear. For a holiday of music is a holiday of cheer. Every note we hear as we dance or at the house helps to make the season bright. Music fills our hearts as we make a joyful noise in this season of love and joy. It's a holiday of music, let the music start to play. For a holiday of music is a happy holiday. For a holiday of music is a happy holiday. Happy holiday. Here we come a caroling among the leaves so green. Here we come a wandering so fair to be seen. Love and joy come to you, and a merry Christmas too. And we wish you, we wish you a happy new year, and we wish you a happy new year. Here we come a caroling. We are now daily beggars who beg from door to door, but we are neighbors' children whom you have seen before. Love and joy come to you, and a merry Christmas too. And we wish you, we wish you a happy new year, and we wish you a happy new year. Here we come a caroling. Bless the master of this house like wise the mistress too. And all the little children a wish from us to you. Love and joy come to you, and a merry Christmas too. And we wish you, we wish you a happy new year, and we wish you a happy new year. Here we come a, here we come a caroling. Here we come a, here we come a caroling. La Navidad, todos celebramos. La Navidad, let us celebrate. La Navidad, todos celebramos. La Navidad, let us celebrate. Bring me peace, drayle go pass. Sing me joy to the world, to all the mundo. La Navidad, todos celebramos. La Navidad, let us celebrate. La Navidad, todos celebramos. La Navidad, let us celebrate. La Navidad, let us celebrate. Se vivon sop, 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 Hanukkah huatop. Hanukkah huatop, se vivon sop, sop, sop. Aximah hula am, neska do la ya shan. Neska do la ya shan, aximah hula am. Drayle spin, drayle spin, Hanukkah, Hanukkah. Holiday come and play. Drayle spin, 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 spin. It's a day for all our people. It's a day when we remember when there was a great miracle. Celebrate this happy day. Snowflakes falling all over town. Slipping, sliding, everybody rushing round. There's an icy chill in the air, telling us that winter's surely here. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sled and let out happy cheer, because it's snowing, blowing all through the day. Winter winds will surely blow your cares away. Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh. Over the fields we go, laughing all the way. Ha, 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 bells on gongs they'll ring, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride and sing a sleighing song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Hey, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jolly bells falling all over town. Slipping, sliding, laughing all the way. Ha, 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 sleigh on gongs and hooting, chilling air we go. What fun it is to ride in a sleigh, it's such a nice, oh, why so glad that we're always here? Grab your sled and let out happy cheering, that is, jingle bells, jingle bells, all the way! We're driving, we're doing, we're riding one-horse open sleigh!
Thank you very much, that was great. I see a lot of potential for The Voice in the next few years. And...
Merry Christmas.
Next item on the agenda is a toll road update.
Mayor, I just announced, the council asked us two meetings ago to initiate an amendment to the city's complaint challenging the contracts recently awarded by TCA for consulting, and then updating the challenge that we've brought to them based on their excesses beyond their legislative authority. So we've sent that to them, asking for their consent to file that with the court. If that consent's denied, then we'll be seeking leave the court to file that later this week.
Next is a presentation by Assistant City Manager Sund and Deputy Administrative Services Director Vincent concerning city financial fiscal reports.
Just give it a few seconds for everyone to mosey out before I begin the presentation. So good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Eric Sund, your Assistant City Manager, we're going to accomplish a couple of things today. We're going to start by doing a presentation as it relates to the state of the city, and then I'm going to turn it over to Judy Vincent, who's going to do two quarterly updates, one for fourth quarter and one for the first quarter of the new fiscal year. One thing I wanted to do is kind of a practice going forward, just to help from the public standpoint, is everything that I'll be giving the council from a presentation tonight is already on our website, and so I'm going to utilize our website to go to those items so that the public, in the event that they want to look them stuff up directly, will be able to see where it's at. So as you can see on our webpage, we've already loaded the fiscal state of the city, but at any time, the public can go, I should talk into the microphone, at any time, the public can go to the city transparency page, and there they'll be able to access all of our quarterly reports, as well as a number of other pieces of information, and you'll see, if I get down here, here's our quarterly financial reports that exist, and so the one for tonight that we'll be doing is there as well. But for the sake of ease, we're going to have it on our latest news, so we can click here, and when it loads, you see that we have our presentation and we have our quarterly reports as well, so I'm going to start with the presentation PowerPoint. Give that a second to load, okay. So I've already introduced myself, so remember, this is a picture looking back at our previous fiscal year 2017, 2018, in terms of how we did and how we came out of that. And so in this first slide that you'll see, we look at what we had from a budget standpoint for revenues, which is the blue, and then the green is the actuals in terms of what we received. So we budgeted $67.4 million in revenue, and we actually came in at $69.0, so about $1.5 million over budget. One thing that I want to make clear is that we always go conservative, because we don't want to see a shortfall there, we always want to see more than what we budgeted for. On the expenditure side, you'll see that we budgeted $76.4 million, and when we closed out the fiscal year, we closed it out at $73 million in expenditures. That's due to salary savings with vacant positions, which is something that we always planned for and know that will happen, or other types of cost-saving measures that occur. So collectively, with both the revenues and the expenditures, we came up with a little bit shy of $5 million, what I'm going to call surplus. The other thing I want to point out, and this is always a good note, is we made $69 million in revenue, but we had $73 million in expenditures. The question going, well, did you have enough revenues to cover your expenditures? Keep it in mind, many of those expenditures in the $73 million are one-time or capital improvement costs that were budgeted in previous budget processes that are allocated, so most of that stuff does not apply to our ongoing operating position. So general fund, unassigned ending fund balance, and so this is important, as we close out every year, whatever we have left over of unspent money goes into our unassigned fund balance. Our unassigned fund balance is our budget that we use to fund our CIPs in future years, and so as we move forward in our long-term financial plan, we actually begin the process of capital improvement analysis, to look at all of the projects that we have slated for the next six years, and also add new projects that need to be addressed as well in future years. So when we closed out the fiscal year 1718, our fund balance was $12.1 million, and when we get to, we're projecting, when we get to the end of fiscal year 1819, we're going to see that fund balance at $5.5 million. Keep it in mind that we have a number of CIPs that are already earmarked for that money to be addressed in the future budget. Fiscal challenges. This is probably the most important slide out of all of this. So we've been really fortunate the last few years to end with a surplus for previous council members. I've always talked about, when we adopt a budget, we want to see at least $500,000 to a million dollars of savings within our budget to put away for a rainy day. Last budget we adopted, we only had about $170,000 in savings, which was a little bit concerning as we enter into future deficits that we forecast in the 2020 and 21 years outwards. While property tax has done great, we are getting basically forecast that our property tax is flattening out. We're not seeing a lot of new properties coming on, we have the outlets that had a property tax spike that we benefited from, but we don't have a lot of new growth opportunities. So we're very cognizant of the property tax, more or less applying CPI for future years out, so that we're conservative again with those revenue options. Sales tax, as you'll see from Judy's report, has gotten better, it's moving up, but it's not something that we think is sustainable, and based on some economic forecasts that we've attended, you know, we keep hearing that 2020 is the year of the recession, or some type of recession. Recently with the Business Council, Orange County Business Council, and Cal State Fullerton economic forecast, the discussion was 2020, and it had to do with the tying in of interest rates as they keep going up, and having a point where we're going to have some issues. So the good news is, San Clemente has been very proactive in preparing for those budget deficits, but that doesn't mean that we're still not going to have impacts to our budget in the future years. And so that leads me to the second bullet, which is facility cost, and so, you know, we have a lot of infrastructure maintenance programs and reserves that need to be addressed, we have a lot of CIP projects that still need to be addressed. Within the last three years, our IT manager Brian Brower has put together an information technology strategic plan that also forecasts IT investments over the next five years. We're making huge headway on that, thanks to Brian and his IT team. We're in the process of implementing a voice-over IP phone system for the whole city, which is long overdue and will save us utility costs. We're also going to be coming to the council in 19 with a new legislative program to award that will deliver agendas, meeting minutes, and agenda reports in a much more efficient manner to both the public and the council. So we have a lot of good things in that respect, and then more recently, the Park Master Plan update that was adopted by the council, that will become a roadmap going forward that we'll be having to look at investments to follow those needs as well within the Park Master Plan update. Then we go to contractual obligations. We have obviously fiscal impacts that reside with our San Clemente Employees Association, we have a three-year MOU, we're in the second year of that MOU, and then the one thing that we're ever diligent on is the rise in public safety contract increases, both with police and fire, and so that's something that, you know, the last couple of years, San Clemente has been faced with significant increases, but not being able to increase services because of those large increases that the sheriff's department has passed on. So that's something that we're also diligent about looking forward. And then also, operating costs, we've, you know, we've continued to have legal costs related to quality of life issues, where we had vacation rentals, or sober living, or hospital, or other things, those have a cost for the city to fund and maintain that quality of life. And then also, all cities that are dealing with this, the rising pension costs coming forward, so we are lucky that we've done some buydowns and really worked to limit our unfunded liability, but we're going to be seeing some large increases that will be affecting us in the future years as well. be affecting us in the future years as well. And so, with that, I'm going to segue over to Judy, who's going to do the fourth quarter report, and then segue into the first quarter report. If there's any questions, I stand ready to answer. No? Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I'm Judy Vincent, Deputy Director of Administrative Services. So, Eric gave you a nice overview of kind of the state of the city, and I'm going to give you something regarding more the numbers and some of the specifics. So, we're going to start with the fourth quarter report. So, first, we look at the overall general fund revenues. And so, in the first column here, you see the category of revenue, and then we see the 1718 budget, and then we see the actual, and then there's the percent of budget that the actual was over budget. So, if you look at the very bottom line, the total, we'll see that in 1718, we budgeted $67.4 million, and our actual was $69 million. So, we're about 102% of our budget on our general fund revenues. And as Eric was saying, we budget conservatively, because you don't want to come in short for your revenue, so we expect to see a little bit more. In some cases, property tax, 103%. That's good news, because property taxes are our largest revenue source, as you can see there. Secondly, sales tax. You'll see that we came in under budget. So, there's a couple of things going on here with sales tax. One is, as Eric said, things have been a little bit stagnant with brick-and-mortar stores, so what's happening is people are moving to more online purchases. We do receive a portion of that through the county pool, but as less sales in the brick-and-mortar shops, we have to share the county pool with other agencies. So, that's one of the things going on. Probably the bigger thing that's happening, though, is that the state had changed their software system, and so the second quarter report that was given to us, they don't feel that it's completely accurate. It doesn't include all of the sales tax that we should have received. And they're struggling with this new software system, and we have consultants that have been helping us with this, but they still haven't really gotten it all corrected. In the first quarter of the current year, they were able to get most of it out to us, but the reporting is still not accurate. So, we feel that this number, the 9.7, is somewhat short of what it probably the actual is. So, the actual's probably more around the 9.9 that we have there. So, probably more of a flat if we knew the actual numbers. So, it's unfortunate that we can't get that from the state at this time. Other than that, you'll see that the other items on here, the ones that are a little bit lower, such as intergovernmental or inter-fund transfers, are things like the intergovernmental or for grants. And so, if we hadn't expended everything from the grant, we would not have received the revenue yet. So, I'm going to move on to talk about a couple of the larger items. So, property tax. This is our three-year history with property tax. So, there, you can see the growth, $31.1 million a couple of years ago, to $32.8 million in 1718, and then we're projecting $33.2 in our 1819 budget. We will be coming forward with mid-year adjustments in January, and so that $33.2 is going to go a little bit higher, because I just got the final numbers that are expected for 1819, so there'll be a slight increase in that. But, you know, the growth is there, and it's been steady, and that's been good. The question is whether that will hold out in the coming years, as things sort of flatten out. Here's our sales tax revenue over the three years, and you can see the 9.9 million that we talked about in the prior year, and then going down to 9.7, and then our 1819 budget at 10.2. So, it's probably, should actually be 9.9, 9.9, and 10.2, but, so somewhat, a little bit of growth, but not large amounts of growth there. And then, if we move on to our expenditures, again, the similar chart that you saw for revenues, where the type of expenditure listed, and then the budget, the actual, and the percentage. Total budget, $73.4 million approximately, and then our actual is about $73 million. So, we're about $367,000 under the budget, so 96%. Again, this is good. We don't want our expenditures to go higher than the budget. And as you can see, we have quite a bit of savings in salaries and benefits, and that comes from vacancies, things that aren't, positions that aren't filled immediately, or perhaps through some changes in the position with, we may have savings just from reorganizing the department. Some of the other things on there, you'll see some of the charges, say, other charges are a little bit higher, but contractual services are a little bit lower. And that could just be the classification of the expenses as they come through. They might go into a different bucket. So, in general, we're pretty, you know, close to where we were with the adjusted budget. Do you have a question? Oh, I saw you. Okay. And so then, this is the general fund fund balance, and Eric already talked about the unassigned fund balance at $12.1 million. We also have an emergency fund balance, and it just so happens they're the same amounts this year. They're not exactly the same, but they round up to about the same amount. So, the emergency fund balance is what we set aside to, for, obviously, some type of emergency that would happen, and that's about 20% of our operating expenses. So, we have a policy that's based on recommendations from the GFOA, and we keep it at 20% to make sure that we have emergency funds set aside. So, in total, it's about $24.2 million. So, that was it for the fourth quarter, and now, we're also, we've just completed the first quarter of the new year, so that would have been completed September 30th. And, you know, there's not a whole lot to report when the first quarter numbers come in. Again, here, you see the revenues and expenditures, the budget and actual, and so our budget for revenues for the year is the 65.2, but only 6.5 have come in. This is quite common in the first quarter, because all of the property tax that we receive comes in in December and April, and so you saw what a large amount of our revenue source that is, and so we don't get those until those time periods. Additionally, our franchise fees, we get a lot of those from SDG&E, from Southern California Gas, and those don't come in until April. So, a lot of our revenue comes in later in the year, so you'll see this, what seems like we haven't received much revenue yet, but that's quite common. Same in the expenditures, $71.3 million. We've spent about $16.2. Obviously, more expenditures than revenues, but because of what I talked about earlier. So then, the thing we have coming up, the next financial presentation will be the LTFP, and that workshop is scheduled the first quarter of 2019. We're working right now on the budget and LTFP calendar for next year, so we hope to have that out before the end of the year, that we would have a calendar put together to have those dates. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, or Eric could answer any questions if you have them. Okay. Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you. Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente, but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes, which should give his or her presentation. And I do have some cards.
Oh, no cards? No. All right, so we will start off tonight with Laurie Kramer, and after Laurie, will be Gus, Dr. Jalamis.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Laurie Kramer. I'm from San Juan Capistrano, but I want to say that I have some San Clemente credentials. I have a daughter and two grandsons who live in town. My wife worked as a volunteer in the Concordia Library for 15, no, 12 years. In fact, they've named the library after her. And we go to church here in town, and I don't think it counts, but I also play golf here every Wednesday at your fine course, so thank you.
Thank you for your money. Yes, we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anyways, first of all, congratulations on your elections. You had a lot of people running, and I'm sure those of you who won are big sigh of relief. So, it was great, but well done. Hard work, I know. My topic tonight and my passion is climate change. Climate change is worldwide. It's affecting everything, and it's affecting us locally, which is why a number of years ago, I joined an organization called Citizens' Climate Lobby, and we have two purposes. One is to educate people about climate change, and also give them tools so that they can do something about it. And secondly, we lobby our congressman back in Washington, so that they'll pass legislation, which in fact will help to minimize climate change. So, we're a worldwide organization. We're nonpartisan. I'm actually belong to the Conservative Caucus of the group. We have 450-plus chapters around the world. We have over 100,000 members. About a year and a half ago, I started a chapter in this area, in South Orange County. We actually meet at St. Andrews by the Sea, United Methodist Church, the second Saturday of every month. In fact, our next meeting is on the 9th of January, start at 9:30. We always have a video conference with someone, an expert, talking to us about climate change. So, we're very happy how it's working out so far for us. So, the reason I've come here tonight, one is to introduce you to our organization, so you know about it, and secondly, to ask you, when you're making your decisions, and you'll make a lot of decisions in the council, if you'll consider climate change and how your decisions are affecting the climate, and if you can do things that in fact will minimize the climate change. And thirdly, I'd like you to learn more about climate change, and I would hope that eventually you will support our purpose and our organization. I have some business cards here. I'd like to give you a little bit about what we do. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to be here.
Thank you very much, Laurie.
I have a card also.
Dr. Gus.
Thank you. My name is Gus Jalamis. I'm a practicing orthopedic surgeon here in San Clemente, and I want to take this opportunity to congratulate the newly-elected council members, Ms. Ferguson and Mr. Bain, and also congratulate Kathy Ward for her continued presence on this council, along with other council members, Hamm and Mayor Schwartz. In addition, I wanted to thank our outgoing council members, Tim Brown and Lori Donchuk, for their leadership and continued support in the attempt to bring a hospital and emergency services back to San Clemente. All of you are to be congratulated for the service to our community, and giving your time for the benefit of all of us who live in this town, which some of you know can be exhausting and at times thankless. I'm here today to remind the council of the ongoing needs of our community, specifically, emergency and hospital services, which have been absent for almost three years. I want to bring attention to the council of the 13,000 petition signatures, the multiple rallies of our citizens in support of maintaining a hospital and emergency service in San Clemente. The literature is replete with data showing that a city which loses emergency services will have increased mortality, not only in our town, but the surrounding cities as well. This is just common sense, which is why several years ago, the city councils of not only San Clemente, Dana Point, San Juan, and Mission Viejo all condemned the closure of the hospital. I'm hopeful that this new makeup of the city council will continue the important issue and keep this at the forefront, and continue to do what's right for the health and safety of our citizens. Thank you again, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Doctor. Next, we have Pamela Joy Glass, and after her will be Debbie. Pardon? I can't. Weddle? Okay, thank you.
My turn to speak? What do I press, or it just goes down? This one? Oh, okay. I'm so happy for the ongoing continuing legacy of our council chambers right here. I'm so grateful for Eric Sund and for James Maxinoff, how they got that house torn down, and it's not a part of this village. Thank you very much, Eric Sund and James Maxinoff. Mayor Steve Schwartz, just, you're our guiding light, and you have the seal above your halo. Pro-Tam, Dan Bain, thank you very much. All of you can do no wrong. Mrs. Ferguson, thank you very much. You're a beautiful lady, and just keep outspoken and highest friendship with your friend over there, Mrs. Kathleen Ward. These are ladies that are, love our village, and will do everything they can to save our city as it's already saved, because all of you are here. Mr. Chris Hamm, Fire Chief Chris Hamm, I hear that you and your wife, I don't know, is having another baby. If that be so to you and your wife, congratulations. That baby can't wait to come. And I just, I've missed a few council chambers' meetings, and I'm okay, and if there was ever a local chamber of local government that can do no wrong, it's right here. You can do no wrong. And I tell you, there's a direct connection to our blessed President, President Donald J. Furia Trump, and Vice President, and just the warmth and comfort and healing that is coming to all of us, and to me personally, I can't even put in word. Mrs. Ferguson, you're a beautiful lady, and I go by my full name, Pamela. I probably didn't hear the last two syllables, so not shortened Pam. And I always have to sing the Mickey Mouse club song, P-A-M-E-L-A. Pamela is my first name. And Steve, thank you lawyer Steve Smith, and just all that you do behind the scenes and out there, right, right in the courtrooms and everything. Behind the closed doors, when I watch TV, just CNN, and I just look and see what a beautiful nation that we live in, that we have. This local government that has, is the wonder star coming right here to our blessed mayor and Pro-Tam. And there's three minutes, that's what I want to, happy holidays.
Thank you, Pamela. So, next we have Debbie.
I'm Debbie Weddle.
After Debbie will be Jean James.
I'd like to welcome the new members and say hello to some of you that I recognize from before. My name is Debbie Weddle. I was a 32-year-plus employee of San Clemente Hospital, a very proud employee of San Clemente Hospital. My end role there before the sad closure was to be an administrative house supervisor on both the day shift and the night shift. The number of patients that we saw, I remember one night with three back-to-back full arrests, two that were admitted to our ICU, and one that unfortunately was gone before he got to us. Those patients would not have survived another 15 minutes on the freeway. I cannot stress the number of patients, pediatrics, infants, that we stabilized, we moved. We didn't strive to be a trauma center. We didn't strive to be a huge medical center. We strove to be the best community hospital it could be, and I believe for many years, we did that. Losing that hospital was a detriment to many people, thousands of people. One question I have is if you were a young family or an older family, retiring and moving to San Clemente, what are the first two questions that you would ask? What is the school district if you're a young family, and where is the hospital if you're an elderly family? And how do we answer that? I myself experienced an injury, thus why you couldn't read my last name, because I've lost the writing of my hand, and I couldn't come to my hospital, and that was very, very sad. The other thing I would like to point out that people may not be aware of is we do have a local physician who's actually moved from San Clemente. They have two young children, because there was no hospital here. The other area that we serve that some may not be aware of is Pendleton. Granted, the Pendleton Hospital is far off base, but they do maneuvers close to us. I know of five faces that I can still see, young Marines that went down with heat stroke, doing maneuvers that came to San Clemente Hospital. Thankfully, we were able to save them and put them back in service of our country. They would not have survived going to Mission Hospital. We can say it's 15 to 20 minutes, but we all know what the road situation is here. So, all I can do is say that we need to hope for a Christmas miracle, that if, I have a plethora of years of experience and knowledge of things that have gone on, and the patients that we saved, if I can be of any assistance to the city council members, please be sure and contact me. So, I thank you, and hope that we can get everybody on board to get a hospital back in San Clemente.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Will you have an opportunity, could you give us, give Mr. Maxinoff your contact information?
Absolutely.
All right.
I will be more than glad to do that. It is my passion to have a hospital back in San Clemente.
Thank you. We need all the assistance we can get.
Evening. Merry Christmas to everyone. I want to, I have three issues to talk about in regards to public safety. Number one, I would like to see this council consider bringing back for an encore performance, the Public Safety Commission, and maybe the Public Safety Commission, and maybe change the objectives, change what you'll be looking at. I think we can agree that at best, the Matrix Study was a flawed document, and we might want to look at, looking beyond the Matrix Study, look at public safety more holistically, and really look at what the art of the possible is, looking at technology, CCTV, license plate readers, that sort of thing. License plate readers that are both mobile and static in nature, great crime-solving tools, I should say. And CCTV, although there is no documentation, there is no study to suggest that CCTV prevents crime, it solves a hell of a lot of crime. And I think we should look at that, look at getting our police services access to the cameras we do have. They don't have complete access yet. And that takes me to the second topic that I wanted to talk about, and that is the condition of the station. The condition of that station, I understand budgets are tight, money's tight, and you are the ones that have to be the stewards of the taxpayers' money. But, you know, these are the guys that put everything on the line for us, and to walk through that station is disgraceful. And I'd really like to see either a plan in place on when they're going to get out of there, what the alternative is, or what the Band-Aids are to at least make it a more pleasant environment for the deputies to work in, and there's just a lot of things. Lastly, what I'd like to bring up is every year, Assistant City Manager Sun was just up here talking about the increasing public safety budget. But every year, Orange County Sheriff's Department gives the city of San Clemente a rebate. And if you go over the past four years or so, that rebate probably is in excess of $2 million over those four years. I don't know exactly what those numbers are, but I would recommend that this body looks at what those numbers are. And I think that money goes into the general fund, and I think we need to look at investing in infrastructure in our public safety, cameras, things of that nature, improving the station. There's a lot of things we could do. Thank you very much and Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Jean. Larry? And then following Larry will be Stephen Cullen. And I'm hoping I've said your name right.
Good evening, council. My name is Larry Culbertson, president of the San Clemente Historical Society. I've got props coming up, I hope. Are the props coming? I'm here to...
I think they're kind of sitting there. You can see them from there.
Okay, good. Very good. We were hoping to get a picture with you, but we'll work out something. This all started back in 1927 when Ole Hansen gave the city the wonderful swimming pool with the beautiful building next to it that was the community meeting place and a locker room. Virgil Westbrook was Ole's favorite architect. He designed what was arguably... Ah, it is coming. He designed what is arguably the most interesting-looking building in town. It was located at the north entrance to town, the first building the prospective property buyers saw when they came to San Clemente. To further embellish the outstanding building, a large weather vane of a swimmer diving into a wave was placed high atop the highest turret. Unfortunately, over the decades, that weather vane went away. We don't know what happened. It probably gave way to the elements. All we had left were about three or four photographs. So when the city undertook the rehabilitation of what we now call the Ole Hansen Beach Club, the Historical Society offered to look into recreating that original, long-gone weather vane. As you can see, it has been done. It was a tremendous effort on the part of some very talented people. They were all volunteers. We've created what we believe is a very close replica of the original. It's anodized aluminum, so it should last for many decades. Lisa Spinelli is here with me, was the designer and chief driving force for this project, and she's here with me tonight to present this weather vane to the city. I also want to thank Mr. Paul Turney, who's also here with us. He provided the machining skills for the project. Once we had the design completed, we needed a sponsor to provide funding for the material, and the San Clemente Women's Club stepped forward with over $2,000 to buy the material. We hope to install the weather vane in January, and we want to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to provide this for the city. So is it possible to get a picture with you?
Sure.
We have a sample of the... This is a mock-up of the plaque that we are going to have made that'll be mounted down at the bottom of the steps, the lead-up to the turret. I don't know, what's the best way to do it? Sure, sounds good.
Is anybody here from the Women's Club? They were going to try to be here if they could, and then the Recreation Department has been working with us.
Larry? Larry? Shouldn't leave it in the front?
It should be in the front. Like in between Laura and...
We've got more of Larry's.
Oh, in between, yes.
Well, it's straight to them so they can see it. Yeah.
Steve, you're hiding. Come this way.
We will definitely be keeping closed tabs and seeing when it's going to be installed. Thank you very much.
I'm going to miss the party. They're going to have a party.
Okay. Next coming up is Stephen, and then Jennifer Masri... Massey? Jennifer Massey.
Sorry, I left my eight-and-a-half-foot-tall metal gift in the car. Follow that, Steve. It bothers me that Gus can read without glasses and I can't, but so be it. I came here tonight to remind you guys of a few things, if I may. Mayor Schwartz, thank you for the attention tonight. It was in August of 2014 that Memorial Care announced closure for the hospital, and it was Memorial Care who came before this body and said that they were examining one of four possible situations when, in reality, they really were only looking at one scenario. It was Memorial who announced a feasibility study that really did not exist. Even to this day, they haven't even manufactured one just for the sake of having something on paper. It simply did not exist. And Dr. Strattan stood before this council and warned that he had seen situations like this where hospitals can just be attritioned away and lose their staff once they make announcements like that, and even with his recommendation that that might happen, and even with his warning that this city might face increased costs, not just for ambulance services, but for the fire and police personnel that would stand by waiting at Mission Hospital while their patients were getting bedded. Even with those warnings, Memorial Care refused to admit that they were closing a hospital. And it took them probably a year to actually say that in public. It was Memorial Care that filed a $42.5 million lawsuit against the city, claiming that the city had devalued their land to zero, when at the time that they made that claim, they had six cash offers on the table, six offers on the table. They weren't all cash, I apologize. But it was this council that went to bat, not just for the city, but for Memorial Care. It was this council that went to Sacramento, arm-in-arm with Senator Bates and Asama Mimbrow, trying to lobby for legislation that would actually allow for Memorial Care to have its cake and eat it too. It was this city that went to bat for them, and then it was, after a fifteen-month fight, it was this council that went to Memorial Care and said, "Okay, we went to bat for you. Come to bat for us now. Stay for a year, let us find someone else to operate it." And Memorial said, "No." So it was that point that the zoning was changed, and I just would like that people not consider that a rash decision and that they not consider it a decision made by the last city council. It was a decision that was made with a lot of input. There were many late nights where many of us asked you to do that. There was a planning commission that considered it and voted unanimously seven-nothing, asking you guys to rezone the property. It was this council that voted five-nothing in favor of that, and then it was 13,000 people that echoed that sentiment that they wanted a hospital. So I would just like you guys to keep that in mind and to keep up the fight, and you know that all of us appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Jennifer?
Yes.
And then we have Michael Clark after that.
Congratulations to the new city council members, Kathy, for your reelection, and to the other city council, we're very grateful, very grateful for all the hard work you do on our behalf, please. And I just want to just encourage you to come, if you could, take turns, just come once or whatever, to Larry Kramer's Citizens Climate Lobby on that second Saturday morning. It just is a couple of hours, but it's a great group of people, and it's such an important issue, really, between the cenofry nuclear waste, which is now the high tide tonight, hopefully will not cover the canisters. But between that, and Mike Levin has been elected as our congressional representative, he's vowing, promising us to do what he can in Washington to get that waste out of here. So I hope that you will support him when he calls for your help. And anyway, please come to the Citizens and Climate Lobby. I think you'd find it very educational. So thank you so much again for all you do, and best wishes for happy holidays.
Thank you very, very much. Michael? And then after that, it'd be Terry Plunkett.
Good evening. My name is Mike Clark. I live in San Clemente. Excuse me. And just first, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and a special thanks to those members of the city council who have historically addressed this emergency situation issue in San Clemente and stayed the course. We really appreciate it. As I said, I live in San Clemente with my wife and our children and our grandchildren, and my wife's ninety-four-year-old mother-in-law, and we love it. We love what we have, and we like and think we're going to love what we aspire toward. But we think we can do a lot better with respect to the health and safety of our community as it relates to emergency services. With a community like ours and everything we have, there's absolutely no reason for a person to die or be disabled because they lack emergency care and treatment in a prescribed period of time. We can do a lot better, and all we think we need to do that is the collective will of the city council and the 13,000 people that have been addressed previously to be able to do that. Before this issue was put on hold from a community perspective, as Steve mentioned, we had three to six buyers for the property. That wasn't an issue. I mean, a lot had to be done, but those issues could have been solved. Memorial Care refused to entertain any of those offers. Personal communications with them said, "We don't want to talk to anybody at that time." We think those buyers are still out there. We have preliminary plans to move forward, and we have the collective will to work with you to be able to do that. So thank you for your continued interest, and we're here to help in any way we can. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Terry? And then after Terry will be Carol Wilson.
My name's Terry Plunkett. I live in the city of San Clemente, and I worked at San Clemente Hospital for 25 years. Before I forget it, congratulations to all you guys for being elected and, you know, for your services that you guys do for us. I'm here for, you know, my concern is about public health and safety. As Mike had said, and everyone else too, we can do better. We need a hospital. I can ask any one of you, you're new, Council Bain, how would you feel right now if you had a heart attack, or one of us wanted respiratory arrest, or, and you got to get on the freeway? I'm pretty emotional about this, and I really don't talk about it, but besides the hospital being my home, and this is where I live, my sister, she was 37 years old, she was sent to Mission Hospital. They didn't have enough staff. She needed a thoracic surgeon right then and there. It took them over four hours to actually transport her and to get her the help she needed. You know what? Money, all this stuff. We can do better. We can do better. And so, you know, I just want you guys to think about that from your own personal. You're here to serve the public. I think before anything else, you know, the health and safety. And, you know, incidentally, I've gotten a job at Tri-City Hospital. Just today, I walked in, 11 o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday. I looked, and like the waiter, they're calling people outside like you do at California Pizza Kitchen, you know, because it's so crowded in there. It was over four hours of a wait on a Tuesday, you know? And I know Mission Hospital's the same. So please, you know, make this a number-one priority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Carol. And then after Carol will be Kirk Tobiasen.
Hi, good evening. Carol Wilson, and I haven't been to see you guys for a while. Some faces are familiar and some are new to me. But I live actually in Capo Beach. I'm two blocks from where San Clemente Hospital used to be, and I used it a lot. I want to just tell a little story that happened last December when I had a very severe infection due to the flu and needed to take it to a hospital right away. I ended up going down to Mission in Laguna Beach, which, because of the time of day I went, was eight in the morning, I was able to get into the emergency room. However, the hospital was full, and there weren't any beds. And had it not been for my physician, Dr. Cullen, being on staff there, I'd probably still be standing in the hall there. But I ended up being in the hospital for three or four days. So I really, you know, I'm encouraging you to please keep up this fight. I know Memorial contributed a lot of money in this last campaign to get their way, and I'm not going to mention who they contributed it to, through them and their partners and PACs and various contributions. But the rest of you that maybe didn't participate in that and don't have an allegiance there, and hopefully the person that did get those contributions, will really look at the city and the people you're here to represent, and please keep up the fight to get a hospital. We need it. You're going to serve your community, you're going to save lives, and we'll love you. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk, and following Kirk is Pete.
Pete Kern.
Kern.
Hello, my name's Kirk Tobiasen, good evening, mayor, council members, chief. My name's Kirk Tobiasen. I grew up here. I've lived in town since the early '60s. I was, had a chance to work as a physical therapy aide at San Clemente in the early '80s until I got hired by San Clemente Fire in 1984 as a reserve. 1990, got hired as full-time, and was a paramedic for over 24 years. That timeframe, from San Clemente to Mission, where you're doing CPR on somebody, for anybody who's gone through an emergency situation at home, when you call 911, it seems like an eternity. We have the skills. We got, you got the greatest fire department, you got the great group of people, we got the manpower, we got everything, but we don't have time. And when you're doing CPR on somebody or cue patient from San Clemente time, 10 minutes to 15 on a good day, we're in an uncontrolled environment in the ambulance. We've got weather, traffic, and Caltrans. And that can be a 30-minute response time from San Clemente to Mission. And four to six minutes is what they taught us in paramedic school back in the '80s, is how long you had to resuscitate somebody when they go into full arrest. Now, you're talking doing that for 30 minutes versus hopefully 10 minutes, they can make a change. I've seen it personally. I also witnessed the other side of it once San Clemente closed. People, they die. And to have the hospital close, and it's putting a stress on every other city, because when we go to Mission, I'm sitting on what we call the wall for four minutes, four hours, sitting with a patient. I got my drug box with me, and we've experienced that where we're pushing drugs on a patient, waiting for a room because they're so overcrowded. South Orange County is just expanding to a rapid, and if Mission closes... And if they're, if Mission closes, they're going to saddle back. And we have done that. I've taken patients to Kaiser, Hogue, and what, I don't know what it is now, it used to be WestMed. I just retired about a year ago, so, but the hospital has to be reopened, because we lose time, we lose patients. Thank you.
Thank you. My last card I have here is from Pete.
Good evening. Honorable City Council, Mr. Mayor, Chief Hamm. I'm also going to speak in support of trying to bring the hospital back to San Clemente. Paramedics came to the city of San Clemente in 1979. I was not one of the earliest paramedics, but I was here for a long time, 12 years as a paramedic here in the city. And during most of that time, the city of San Clemente Hospital was open, and we enjoyed taking those patients that Mr. Tobiasen talked about only on a four- or five-minute ride instead of a 10- or 15-minute ride. There are a few of us in this room, maybe four, that knows what goes on in the back of an ambulance with an advanced cardiac life support patient, and there's a lot of things that are happening in the back of that ambulance, and oftentimes, none of it is good. In the best of times, in the best environment, in the best circumstances, as a paramedic with your skills, everything goes according to plan. The lighting is perfect, the position is perfect, you can start that IV, you can get that endotracheal tube into the right place, and everything works out great. But I'm here to tell you that it is not always like that, and those things don't always happen. And even though paramedics have great training and great skills, things don't always go according to plan, and when they don't, those extra minutes is life and death, quite literally. We can't, without the IV, without the airway, without those things that we are trained to do, and most, we hope that it goes right, it doesn't always go right. So bringing back emergency services or emergency medical services to the city of San Clemente is extremely important, and I hope you continue to support that effort as we go into this new year and new council. So thank you for listening to my comments, and Merry Christmas to you all. Thanks.
Just a quick note before we go further, just all those questioning regarding the hospital, there's no one on this current city council, or any prior than I know of, that has any desire whatsoever to ease off and to not keep fighting the battle to have our hospital reopened. So it is a commitment of the city council, of city staff, of city management, from top to bottom. We work on this almost every day, but you can't negotiate with yourself. And so just put that out there, all right?
Can I also ask, thank you for that, anyone that spoke tonight that has personal experience, would you please fill out another card and just write your phone number on it, and allegedly write your name, the firefighters also, because we might be calling on you. We need those stories. So thank you very much.
Could we have a motion to waive reading and full of all resolutions and ordinances?
I'll motion to waive.
Second, is there a second? I just seconded, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close session report?
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. Just two items that we need to report. In the closed session, item number A, there are several lawsuits. The last listed is San Clemente Coastal Access Alliance versus City of San Clemente. In that case, the council gave direction to the city attorney to answer and defend that lawsuit. The vote on that was four to one, with Councilmember Ferguson voting no, and with the desire to pursue other courses of action. So we needed to report that. The other item had to do with the memorial care lawsuit, and the council gave this direction, which we'd like to have formalized with a motion here, has to do with future agenda items, and the item was to ask staff at first opportunity to bring back for council's consideration the initiation of a zoning amendment to prevent hospitals on additional sites in the city. To, I said permit, to permit additional sites on additional, so it would be to bring forth a zoning initiation for council's consideration of that global issue. So if you'd like to make a motion and have a second and vote to agendize that for the future.
Could I have someone make the motion? Does someone?
I'll make a motion that we put on the agenda for future consideration, a overlay zoning amendment to look at other areas to permit a hospital in the city of San Clemente.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, and second is...
Okay, Mayor, and with Councilmember Bane, would it be okay if we didn't limit ourselves to an overlay, but just looked at zoning in general? Which would include...
Zoning in general would be fine.
Thank you. All right.
And again, this is what we've just, we haven't voted on yet, but what the proposal is, is for us to direct staff to come up with an overlay so that should anybody want to build a hospital anywhere in our city, we'll have an overlay that'll allow them to do it. So we want to eliminate any objections to anyone regarding putting a hospital back where it belongs in our city. So with that, I'll call for the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried unanimously.
That's the end of the report. Thanks, Mayor.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council, staff, or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. And the public has requested the removal of item 6M, M as in Mary.
Excuse me, Joanne, at what point do we request removal of an item? I'd like to request one.
Right now.
J. J.
J.
Mm-hmm.
Any other items?
6A2.
All right, I'll entertain someone to make a motion on the balance.
I did it last time. Okay, I'll move the balance. Oh.
Let's see. No, I think what I need to pull, though, is the, there's our item on this for the field debates. The field, the... Okay, hurry, what's...
It's already, it's already set. Perfect.
I have a motion from Kathy.
Second.
And I have a second, from Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Item A2.
I pulled the minutes of the council meeting of December 4th. Joanne, on page 14. We, wait, I might be wrong on that. Page six, I'm sorry. We were making motions for mayor, and I made a motion for council for the mayor pro temp, Chris Hamm, to be mayor, and my vote should have reflected that. So I would like my vote corrected to say Hamm on page six, should have matched my motion.
I'd like to be able to check the tape on that. I thought it was odd, too, and when I checked the tape, as I recall...
Well, I just, if you make a motion, your vote should match it. So I'm wanting to change my vote to say Hamm, so that it matches my...
There's no nomination, I remember.
No, I nominated Hamm. So, and I don't know that that's, I think it's reflected in here. It is reflected in here. On page five, Councilmember Ward nominated Chris Hamm to the opposite mayor.
Okay, yeah.
So my vote should have been the same. So with that change, I'll move the item.
Okay.
Is there a second? I'll move. It's been made, and motion's been made.
Can I make a substitute motion, that we go back and look at the tape to make sure that that's, in fact, what happened?
Is there a second?
I'll second. Joanne, am I, as a council member, not...
And your second is to...
Look at the tape.
To the substitute, okay.
As a council member, I can correct the minutes. Can I not?
My understanding is, I'll defer to the city attorney, is that you can correct the minutes if they're incorrect, but I don't think you can change history. I think you would need to vote to reconsider.
And that's where I think we'll go, if we go with the second one, if it says it in the tapes, it should be, then we'll do it, and if it doesn't say it, then we won't.
I don't, I don't think I was in that vote. I doubt the tape's going to show that. So I'm saying what my intent is here, so I'll do say that for the record.
Okay, so we leave it for the record that, you know, Kathy Ward believes that she has, she did, should show up that way, and that what I would recommend, that we go with Councilman Bane's suggesting that we review the tapes and confirm it and then correct it, as the tapes reflect.
Okay. And I will send you an email letting you know what I find out.
Okay.
Okay? So do you want to approve the minutes with the understanding that...
Well, we, yeah, I want to, yeah. Go ahead, why don't you state it?
To approve the minutes with the understanding that I will double-check the tape, and if it is, if the tape indicates the minutes are incorrect, I will make that change.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so then we have item 6M.
What, J? Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
J comes before M in my, in the alphabet. Item J.
Okay, I requested removal of item J in reading this. Just nonprofits that host events in town, that sponsor, the city sponsors and partners with us do a really great job mobilizing volunteers and hosting events that bring tourism to San Clemente, bring the community together to enjoy our town and bond together. It's great for our overall quality of life. But in reading this, and Samantha could probably address this and clarify for me, but I think it's overreach when we're going to tell nonprofits that they can't take substantial donations to put on their events. They're very expensive to put on. We couldn't put them on, they're so cost prohibitive. We don't have the staff to put on some of the events they do. I'll just say the Fiesta, for instance, is one that brings, you know, 30,000 to 50,000 people throughout the day, and, you know, they need sponsorships, and because the city might have a particular feeling about a company or whatnot, they shouldn't have a say in that nonprofit that's hosting such a great event for the community that they can't take that money to put on the event that the community loves and enjoys. So maybe Samantha can speak more to that, but I think it's an overreach and comes to a freedom of association issue as well. So Samantha, could you please?
Here, I'd just like to flesh out a little more of this and then turn it over to you guys. Where I come in on this is, what we're talking about is the discount we're giving to the nonprofits or the organizations to run the event in city facilities so that they have a larger margin in that. Where I come from is, if our city is in the middle of a lawsuit litigation with a group, we don't want to underwrite promoting that group we're fighting with or we're having in litigation with at one of our facilities. I'm inclined to couch it as, we're not going to tell the nonprofits who they can take money from, but should they take money from someone that we are in the middle of a battle with, then we are not going to offer the discount. They could still have the venue, they could still do all they want to do, all the money raises we're doing. We're talking about just the discount we're offering to them, and that should, we don't want to be subsidizing another company that we're battling in the courts by allowing, by giving a discount on the facilities. That's my take on it.
And then it might come to them not having the event at all. Because it is tough to get corporate sponsorships. I know I served on a committee here when I was an employee of the city, and we tried to get corporate sponsorships when we were filling a funding gap for the sports park. It was impossible. And we got, you know, small donations, but we never were able to fill that gap without, of course, selling the land that Target purchased to build the Target.
I understand that, but we're not, we're talking about one of many sponsors, or they choose to have only one sponsor. We're still turning it around. The city should not be subsidizing to a sponsor who we are in the middle of spending thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, fighting in the court.
So could they have the event and just pay full price?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I'm, so anyway, you want to...
Mayor, can I be heard?
Sure. Go ahead, Dan.
Sorry, thanks, and Samantha, I'm sorry to pile a bunch on you. I agree with the sentiment that we shouldn't be sponsoring or giving subsidies to folks that we're in litigation with. I guess the issue that I have right now, the way the policy is, is, you know, we're delegating responsibility down to Samantha and then to James to decide what is in the best interest of the city, and there's really no definitive guidelines that are in this policy. It's very loose language in terms of when we're going to say, yeah, we don't want to partner with this group, or we have, we reserve the right to not give the discount. I think that's, it's not fair, I think, to either Samantha or James. We, as a city council, should be making those policy decisions, or at a minimum, going back and looking at this and giving very definitive guidelines as to when, like litigation would be a prime example. If we're in litigation with somebody, we shouldn't be giving them a subsidy if they're partnering with the group. Looking at things like that, instead of a very loose, what I see is, there's no guidance given at all to James or to Samantha in making this decision, and frankly, I think that's a delegation of authority that I'm uncomfortable with, unless there's very definitive guidelines that we give them as policymakers here in the city. So that's where I come from. I don't disagree with the sentiment, I just think that right now, it needs to be flushed out a lot further to give definitive guidance to staff, because Samantha is going to bear the brunt if she denies an organization a partnership for $5,000. And then finally, and probably Chris jump in, I don't want there to be any sort of perception in the public that after an election or otherwise, there's a couple of council members here that have a vendetta against a particular group that they're sponsoring. I'd rather all this be in the open, at the policy level, so we can discuss the rationale and the reasons why, instead of it being kind of behind closed doors. So that's my points.
So two things. The first one, Laura, this was brought up not from the council, but brought up from the community. So they had a serious issue with, I'll call it a hypothetical situation, where we had an event down at the pier, and you walked down the pier, and the first thing you see is the TCA sponsoring the event, and you think to yourself...
Right, remember, the city paid for the sponsorship in reimbursement.
Exactly.
The sponsorship they lost.
The city's saying, "We're fighting the TCA, here we are partnering with them, with this, through this organization." So it really muddies the waters for the community in terms of where does the city stand on these certain issues. So that's where this came from, specifically. To Dan's point, this is the time to flush it out, Dan. I think to send it back would be silly, because we're going next year, calendar year, and I like your idea of litigation. I thought that's how this was going to come back. So I think if we just add specifically, because that solves everyone's problems, if the city's in active litigation with a member, then it's not up to James, it's not up to Samantha.
So that's not the way it's written right now, and I don't disagree with what you've outlined. Well, we can, well, I can't think of all the different ways that I would want to modify this right now. Litigation's an easy one. The TCA's an easy one. But what if we get into a situation where a particular council member, a couple of council members don't like a person or a business? How do we deal with that?
Well, that's, so that's exactly what I don't want to get into, and I think your recommendation of litigation is spot on.
Okay.
Yeah, right. And so what we're saying is, we want to alter the recommended...
It's page three.
Policy and procedure.
6J5.
To specifically state that it's any sponsor that is in litigation with the city would be barred from participating in a city sponsored through its discount or partnership with the group, or the group can decide to pay full fare and just not receive the discount.
That needs to be clear in this policy.
Well, I'm just saying.
You're on 63, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is it?
Yes.
There.
To be honest, that's what I thought it was. When this came up with the issue with the TCA and the Ocean Fest, we said that, I think the council, as a council, said, we are in litigation, we should not be sponsoring anything that has any sponsorships along with TCA. And we did that because that was an outcry from our residents, and it's just, it makes sense.
It's common sense.
So I'm for, if you want to change this so it's very easy for James and Samantha, that it's anyone that we have in litigation with, to Councilmember Baines's position. I can't think of any time that we've ever said no to someone. We've never, there isn't an organization we don't like. That just doesn't come up.
It'd be overreach, too. It'd be overreach.
Right, so that would not happen. So if changing it, I'm in support if we change it to just the litigation guidelines. That's the only time I think this has ever even come up. So, but it has to go to any buildings that we own, any organizations that we are funding, if they're in our building, not just events. It has to pertain to this also.
Again, it pertains, there's two things that I would like it specifically to state. That one, it pertains to whether or not a group is receiving a discount for using our facilities, and once they qualify for that, then it's as any sponsor is in current litigation with the city, is, will not be acceptable when we have discounted. If they want to go ahead and have that sponsor and have paid full fare for the facility, that's fine. Does that, is that what we're all agreeing to?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we have a motion to state that, they should be reworded, to state that specifically?
So can we then take away the limitations in terms of the amount, because I think it doesn't matter, or at least-
I think so, too.
I don't want staff having to deal with this.
I agree, we agree. Just eliminate all the amount and all that stuff, it's just, it's black and white. It's a city facility that there, the group is requesting a partnership for a discount for the use of the facility, and that, and if that's included, then that agreement should include that there'll be no sponsor, promotion of any sponsor that is currently in litigation with the city. Real simple, real basic, real black and white.
Is that a motion? I'll second that motion.
Yes, it's a motion, and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries on. Now we're on him?
Yeah.
Six M, and I do have one card.
I'll follow Samantha.
Do we want to, should we hear from, I've got a card here from, I'm sorry, Robert Nicholas.
Yeah.
Hi, Robert, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Schwartz, and members of the city council. My name is Robert Nicolosi. I'm representing the San Clemente Little League. Currently, I serve as the vice president and have been on the board for three years. We are one of the largest Little Leagues in the country with over one thousand players. Our challenger division, home to two disabled players, is also one of the largest in the country. San Clemente Little League is one of, if not your largest tenants, of city fields, and field rentals are the league's biggest expense. With safety being the number one priority, our focus for the past two and a half years has been working with the city's Parks and Recreation and Maintenance Department to improve quality and maintenance of the fields. We feel like we have worked well with the city in a partnership capacity where the responsibility has not rested solely with the city. During this time, we have made progress together, and San Clemente Little League has invested close to six figures on improvements ranging from new mounds, wind screens, yellow fence cappings, distance markings, and other equipment that all citizens from San Clemente enjoy since the fields are open to the public. In March of 2018, I met with Mayor Brown on behalf of Little League and concerned families. The objective was twofold. One, how do we restore the fields to acceptable and safe playing conditions? Two, with the maintenance contract coming due, how do we hire a fields company rather than a landscape company to maintain the fields, since a fields company has the expertise and equipment needed? Little League was willing to incur any incremental cost if needed to hire a fields company. After the meeting, the league continued to work closely with Parks and Recreation and Maintenance Department to address these questions. Little League proposed to pay one hundred percent of the cost to redo the infield, since the city at this time did not have the money to help fix the fields. We felt that the kids' safety has been compromised, and conditions required us to act immediately. However, we feel this should not have been the sole responsibility of the league to pay and fix city fields. Just have a poster board of, just, there's many examples, but someone who's taken to the hospital with a face injury. San Clemente Little League voted to invest one hundred thousand dollars in redoing the infields at Hermosa Sports Park, San G, and Vista Beja. This is a very big investment for the league, spending close to every free dollar to make improvements. The scope of the project will include leveling the fields, adding the proper soil and grass on the infields, as well as redoing the irrigation on the field. After agreeing that San Clemente Little League will pay for the field improvements, our biggest concern moving forward would be the ongoing maintenance of the fields. Just have two, an example of a before and aftershock. This was in March of 2017. We worked with the city to redo the mounds and the grass surrounding that. Ten months later, without a proper maintenance plan, this is what the field looks like, and it's worse today. The new contracts have been recently awarded. There's been some streamlining of vendors handling the parks and fields. The contracts, however, are still split, where a fields company will be maintaining the dirt portion of the infields, and the landscape company has been awarded the grass of both the infields and the outfields. Ideally, one company, a fields company, would have the responsibility to take care of the entire field, or a minimum, a fields company handles the entire infield dirt and grass. A majority of our injuries happen on the infield. The Maintenance Department is aware of our concerns, but remains optimistic. We would like to propose ongoing quality checks, holding the vendors accountable. If they are not capable, the league would like reassurance from the city that the fields would be swiftly restored. There is no reason why we can't be proud of our fields, and why they can't look like our neighboring towns of Dana Point, Laguna Nigal, and Mission Viejo.
Okay, I need you to wrap.
In closing, San Clemente Little League is excited to make such a major investment into the fields, and we need to work together to make sure that six months from now, we are not here addressing these questions. After tonight's vote, we would like to move as quickly as possible, so that our season can start on time on February 1st. Thank you, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Samantha. Would you give me your opinion, or what's going, what's the background on this?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Samantha Thomas Wiley. I'm the Recreation Manager, and before you tonight is a report that presents an option to improve Vista Hermosa Sports Fields Three and Four. That's the smaller baseball fields at the sports park. Again, this is a donation that Little League has come forward to make, to try to start by improving our fields at these two sites. The goal is, if this works and it's successful, and again, we're in a new relationship with some new contractors. We're very confident, Maintenance Division's very confident, that we have a great new contractor on board who can properly maintain those infields, but we do want to make sure that it's still gonna be a working relationship and that it will work out. So before we dive into more investments into more fields, we want to test it on these two fields. Again, Maintenance and Public Works, very confident that this will work out. The nexus behind this is a couple things with Hermosa in particular, as it states in the staff report. The irrigation systems that currently exist there have horrible placement. They were placed wrong to begin with when we opened the sports park, so we have to do everything from flood irrigating and all kinds of other tricks to try to keep the fields sustainable, and I know they're not to the best quality that they could be. So replacing and rearranging the irrigation system will be part of this project, and from there, it will be an angel dust that will be put on. It'll be a lot, higher quality materials, and all of this has been discussed with Little League, and to my understanding, Little League's on board with this as well. We've done several walks through the fields and so on and so forth. So if this is successful, we hope to see this, if it's approved tonight, our contractor can start as early as next week, and it shouldn't take any longer than three weeks. So we should see a really quick turnaround on this project, and again, if it works out, the goal is that we would then incorporate future improvements to all of our ball fields into the CIP program, which we think is a better fit in general, and then we can look at the long-term maintenance as well and make sure it's budgeted for. If this is something that needs to happen every ten years or on a regular cycle, we want to make sure we're considering that in our long-term budgeting process as well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, now, did this run through Parks and Rec Commission first? I mean, have they met and talked, and was there public hearing on this?
They have, they are aware of the fields issues. This is something that Little League's brought up. We've talked about it at their partnership review even, and there was discussion that Little League would be coming forward with this, and the partnerships on review later on this evening. So they're aware of it. Again, Commission's very supportive of Little League. Their initiatives that they've come out with so far have been really successful, and again, they've been a great partner, and they continue to do so. So we've got the support. Question. And how about Mr. Nicolosi? He mentioned the follow-up on the contractors. Who's going to do that, make sure they're actually doing their job? Sure, that would be Randy Little's our maintenance manager. He's on top of it. I mean, he has sorted through with a needle and a fine-tooth comb to make sure that these contracts are gonna serve the best that we can. We have an extensive park system, so that's part of their new contracts, and they will have regular check-ins with these contractors on a regular basis, and then we've got our own staff that go out on foot to make sure that things are looking up to par as well. And that wasn't being done before? It was, but just with the outdated contracts that we had in place, we just had some disconnects with the level of service that was being provided. So again, we have better contractors on board. Okay, good. Thank you. Sure.
Councilman Bing.
Thank you for the presentation, and first of all, I spoke with Robert earlier this week. I think they picked on me because I was the former baseball player, I think, of this group, so I commend Little League for what they're doing. I grew up in a lot of those fields, and in fact, had a lot of shiners like the young man that you showed us on Bad Field. So I'm incredibly supportive of this, and I thank you for coming out of your pocket to help us fix the city fields. One of the things that was mentioned to me this week was that they'd actually like to move forward with all of the fields, and they have the money to do so. I think that they've talked to you about that. If we wanted to move forward with all the fields, how would that work? Could we make an amendment to that tonight, or would you want to bring back a potential proposal for the very next council meeting? Because I know that their season starts in February.
Sure.
So we have a short timeframe, and I've talked to Robert and others and said, hey, if we go forward with all of these fields, you may not have some of these fields if there's an issue with the vendor. So I wanted to know how that process could work, if we wanted to move forward with all the fields now.
I think if that's the council's prerogative, we would look for an amendment tonight. I would hate to, with their, start of their season coming up, I would hate to wait until January 15th, which is our first meeting of January. We don't have a meeting on the first, due the holiday, so if the council is interested in following that, then I think we should do it tonight and give them the go-ahead, so we start a month earlier.
Sure, and I would be interested in that. I'd also like to look at bringing the maintenance contract back for review after the season's over. I don't know if the season's over in July or August, I'm sure it depends, but whatever, the first available opportunity for a maintenance review, I'd like to look at that.
We'll definitely do that. We'll come back, and like Samantha said, we'll review it on a constant basis during the season to make sure that it's being maintained properly.
The only thing I'm concerned with is that you mentioned that we're doing this kind of as a test to see if it works, so it would be under the understanding, it's great that they want to pay for it, that it may not work all the way, and there might be some additional funding needed, if, you know, if this isn't a solution. Because I think they mentioned that was a concern, so, but if the checks are built into the new contracts, you know, if we review it, that'd be good.
Chris.
I'm really on the fence regarding doing everything, only because I know the way contractors work, and the more you put on the plate, they can mobilize for the whole thing, but it's still man-hours. And now we're shortening it, we're in a rather short window to get a lot of this stuff done and have it mature enough to play on. And what I'd hate to do is have some new field work done out there, but it isn't able to really mature enough, and we end up ripping up what we just spent money to put in. So I tend, I'm gonna tend to lean for this, do what's been presented tonight, let it take, see how it does, and then after the season ends, we review it all and then look at the whole thing. That's the position I'll be taking.
So just final thought. It sounds like all of the fields are in pretty bad shape. Is that true? Are there some fields that are in worse shape than others?
I think Hermosa's our starting point. We just recently redid Beja, and Beja's going through some more improvements with the concession stand that was burned down, as well as the restroom replacement. They all need help at some point, but if we can start with Hermosa, I think that's the right path to go down at this point.
I'm still interested in going for all of them, and again, you know, they've been gracious, they being the Little League, to provide all the money for this project, and I'm pretty confident that our maintenance group can be good stewards of that money and make sure that the contractors are doing what they need to do, and frankly, if the Little League is willing to bear some of the risk that not all the fields are done on time, and that's my understanding that they are, then I'd be fully supportive of getting them all done now, so that hopefully they have good fields to play on, starting in February, so.
Samantha, we're paying for some of these improvements.
Some of, no, well, yes and no. We have, in the new contracts, there's some items that are already included, including the laser leveling, so that's something that will happen on an annual basis. That didn't happen before, so that's another great thing about our new contracts. So that is covered in the existing costs. Tonight, we're looking at an increase in the supplemental. These new contracts have very little to no supplemental built into them, so this is something that would have to happen anytime we want to make some kind of improvement like this.
Well, with all that, and, you know, we're going into winter. I think I'm with the mayor. I'm gonna follow staff's recommendations first for now. It's too much to just put this on. It's something that can always come back to us at another time.
We don't have a motion, though.
So can I actually make a motion? Would everybody be supportive of the follow-up on the maintenance contract?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion, following staff recommendation to approve and authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one to contract C-18-40 by and between the city of San Clemente and PSFM, and also to accept the donation of an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand from San Clemente Little League to fund the infield improvements to account 001-000-21563, Wishbrook, our book, park improvements, with the additional caveat that the maintenance contract comes back to us after the season has ended, so we can evaluate the maintenance and the contractor.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries on.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first public hearing is to consider the City of San Clemente Annual Mitigation Fee Act Report for fiscal year 1718.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Michael Johnston. I'm a management analyst with the city manager's office. Before you tonight, we have the annual mitigation fee report that is required, as noted in the agenda report, under Government Code Sections 66001 and 6- the agenda report, under Government Code Sections 66001 and 66006, which require local agencies that implement development fees to submit annual notices detailing the status of those fees. So tonight is a public hearing, and the purpose of this is to disclose all of the city's mitigation fees and provide the requisite update for projects that are currently being funded or are earmarked to be funded by the fees. So that concludes my report, and open it up to the public hearing and comment from the public on the report.
Do we have any cards?
We do not. Please, don't open the public hearing.
Just open and close, and then I'll make a motion.
Open? Close?
I move to receive and file the annual report concerning mitigation fee act fiscal year 2017-18 dated December 18, 2018, which is on file with City Clerk.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous. Thank you.
Great report. Thank you.
The next public hearing is to consider objections or protests, if any, to the costs of the abatement of weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt upon streets, sidewalks, parkways, and private property within the city, and to the assignment of these costs to the properties on which the abatement was completed.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Adam Maitamian. I'm the code compliance manager. This public hearing is to close this year's weed abatement program and to bill the private property owners for whose properties the city's contractor had to go on and clear. There were 20 this year. The attachments identify the costs of the program. The total charges for the non-compliant lots, which is what we're asking to go ahead and bill, is $4,147.88. The bulk of the money spent in this year's program were spent clearing the city's lots, which are part of this program. So with that, I will ask the council to do three things. The first is to waive the city's notification costs for the compliant properties, and those are the ones where they got the notification, they cleaned it themselves. The second would be to approve the weed abatement report by motion, and the third would be to authorize the weed abatement contractor, contract administrator to bill the amounts indicated in the report to those appropriate private property owners.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff? Do we have any questions at all regarding, we have no cards on this, right? Okay. So I'll entertain the mo.
Yeah, open and close.
Open and close.
I move that we waive the city's notification costs for the compliant property owners, two, approve the weed abatement report, three, authorize the weed abatement contract administrator to bill the amounts indicated in the report to the appropriate property owners.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hamm, second by Councilmember Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous.
The next public hearing is to consider approving Historic Property Preservation Agreement 18575 for the historic home located at 199 Avenue de La Cuesta.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is David Curio, Assistant Planner. Here we have a Historic Property Preservation Agreement for a property at 199 Avenue de La Cuesta, named the Pecoric Residence for this application. This property was designed by Virgil Westbrook, a prominent architect that designed many historic resources in San Clemente, including the Only Hansen Beach Club. So here we have the, a view of the front home. You can see character-defining features of the Spanish colonial revival style of architecture, such as clay tile roof, a low pitched roof, exposed rafter tails, wood windows and doors, and white stucco. So brief summary on the permit history. We have work that has been done on the property from 1950 to 2001. One notable work that was done was in 1957. It was a detached studio that was done to the east of the original home. It was not designed in the Spanish colonial revival style, however, it was in 1976, improved with a pitched roof to move it closer to the Spanish style. So this is a list here that was compiled by the GPA consulting firm that also assessed the two prior Mills Act applications presented to the city council two weeks ago. This is the first set of improvements to be completed by 2023, the first one being a repair of a roof leak and replacement of any damaged missing tiles, which has been completed by the applicant. This is the second set of items to be completed by 2028. At the last city council meeting, there was discussion to include as a condition the requirement of a chairman inspection report to be submitted to Planning Division, so I would note that it has been done for this application as well. So both staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
And we do have a card on this? So I'll go ahead and open, open, public input, and Larry Culbertson.
Larry Culbertson, Historical Society. Get my little notes here. The Historical Society is very supportive of the HPPAs, and 199 Avenue de La Cuesta is an outstanding example of Spanish colonial revival architecture. The house is prominently located, and it's highly visible. That makes it all the more important that we do it right. It's an excellent report, and the proposed rehabilitation items were well-chosen. My only complaint is kind of generic, the same complaint that I raised two weeks ago. They don't have to do the termite report for 10 years. The building could fall down by then. For, if you look at the history, we've been doing Mills Acts for about 20 years. Back in the beginning, they didn't have any time schedule. They just said, do X, Y, and Z. At the end of 10 years, you should have done them. So finally, about seven years ago or so, a lot of staff time was spent to redo the Mills Act requirements with respect to the time schedule. And what you see, what was actually in this report, if you look at page 17 of your report, there was a time. It was one through seven. You do such and such by 2019, such and such by 2021, so on. That makes sense. But to go every, not check them for five years, and then five years after that, seems to me a little bit ridiculous. I'm sure that these particular owners will probably get everything done, you know, next week. But if you look at the history of the Mills Act, we have a lot of people over the years that have not done what they were supposed to do, and all of a sudden, they sell it. And what they, the change they made about seven years ago was, at the point in time when you sell it, you have to bring everything up. Before that, you could sell it without even doing it. So I would encourage the city council to make, to tighten up on that a little bit, so that the, anybody who gets under Mills Act protection has to get those things done, you know, every year, every two years, whatever the time schedule is. I would also encourage, part of the reason that they went to this was to save staff time, because staff has to go out and inspect the house. Under the current system, there's no, there's nothing. You pay, I think, $358 for your initial permit. The city doesn't charge anything for those inspections. So if we had something, as other cities do, something like a $50 a year, for somebody who's saving $5,000 to $10,000 a year on their property tax, charge them $50 a year for the inspection and have an annual inspection. I think we should, you know, relook at how we're running the Mills Act. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
I am supportive of this project, though. Absolutely.
I'd like to chime in a little bit. I thought, when you mentioned it, I thought that you said they already got a termite inspection on this. They didn't yet? They just agreed to do it?
They did provide a termite inspection report that was done prior to the purchase of the property, before they purchased it, but we are, as the last item on the list, requiring them to do it by 2028 again.
Okay. Yeah. I'm not inclined to write, I would rather have planning work on if maneuvering and shaving instead of us trying to rewrite formula as far as times go and policy goes, as far as on the permit process as it's going through this. So I wouldn't be inclined to try to change anything tonight, other than just to look at this. Anybody else?
Yes, and we have that proposed completion prioritized work schedule that they have. So is it just we operate on good faith, that they'll follow the timeline? Is that what we do?
We would also go out in 2023 to ensure that they've been completed.
And encourage them to do so.
Right. And if they have completed anything, they would inform the city so that we could keep the application updated. Yeah.
I think that's acceptable.
All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing now. Anything else? Any other?
Let me ask staff a question. This was already on the Mills Act, this property, wasn't it? So this is just a re-upping it, or was this property not included prior?
It was not.
Ever?
Never.
I'm really surprised.
We do have a couple on that street, so we might be, you're probably thinking of another one, but we do have a total of five historic resources on La Cuesta.
I'm surprised because this house is so prominent on the street that it's not, it hasn't been part of it. Okay, that's, I have no other questions.
What, Dan?
Yeah, so just briefly, I raised it last time, but you know, so in the planning commission, we dealt with a lot of these as well, and just making sure we're following up, because that is a concern. If they're saving this much money, we need to make sure that they're doing what they're obligated to do. And we're not going to do this tonight. I agree with the mayor. We're not going to redo this agreement, but I think at some point, we will probably want to revisit our policy in terms of the timing and how much we're following up. So my only point.
All right. In that case?
I move that we adopt resolution number 1856 and tell resolution to the city council, City of San Clemente, California, approving Historic Property Preservation Agreement 18-575 for the property located at 199 Avenue de La Cuesta.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Hamm and a second by Councilman Bain. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous.
The next public hearing is to consider the Local Coastal Program Land Use Plan Amendment and authorization to submit the amendment to the California Coastal Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Leslie Meyerhoff, and I'm the city's LCP manager, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight. The item before you is consideration of an amendment to your Local Coastal Program Land Use Plan. The Local Coastal Program consists of two parts, LUP, which contains the policies, and the IP or the implementation plan, which will contain the set of regulations to implement the policies. All California cities are required to ultimately have a certified LCP. The City of San Clemente adopted its original land use planner, LUP, in 1988, and then in June of this year, adopted a comprehensive update to that document. At that same hearing in June of this year, the city council directed staff to begin preparing an amendment that was focused on two issues. And specifically, the issues before you are the refinements to the definition of a major remodel, which is in the LUP, and the second item is a site-specific land use change. The LCP pertains only to the city's coastal zone, which essentially covers the area from the beach landward to Interstate 5, represents approximately 15% of the total city, and contains five miles of coastline, approximately 20 acres of beach, and has 15 public beach So one of the components that's before you tonight as part of the amendment is a modification to the starting date for when cumulative changes to existing structures would begin to be counted. And the council directed in June that we change that from 1977 to 2018, or LUP certification date. And the rationale provided by the city council to staff was that there's no other city in California that has 1977 as the starting date for this definition. One of the other rationales was that there would be difficulties with respect to enforcement if you had to go back 40-plus years in time and look at changes to an existing structure. And then lastly, this was one of the key points reached between the stakeholders in consideration of the LUP as a whole, was that this was a compromise that the city would immediately revisit this issue. The second primary change before you tonight, excuse me, pertains to changing back a land use designation for two parcels on Coronado Lane. The change would convert the parcels from mixed-use four back to residential high land use. And we would also propose to modify the boundary of the visitors serving commercial overlay that affects those parcels as well. The rationale provided by the city council on this item pertains to the fact that these parcels were previously designated for commercial land use for more than 20 years, and during that time, there was no viable commercial land uses that developed on those sites. As part of the general plan update that was prepared by the city in, I believe it was 2014, the council changed those back to residential high. This graphic shows the two parcels in question that are proposed to be re-designated for residential high. So following city council direction in June of this year, city staff began working to formulate the specific contents of the land use plan amendment, and we worked closely with coastal commission staff. They're aware that this amendment is under consideration, and this just outlines the basic schedule and some of the key milestones that were accomplished since June of this year. We developed the land use plan amendment and then took the item to the coastal advisory committee for an informational update in September of this year. And then a week later, we went to the planning commission and asked for approval to release the land use plan amendment for a six-week public review and comment period that ran from September 19th to October 31st. Within that six-week comment period, city staff did not receive any formal comments on the land use plan amendment. We then took the item back to the planning commission December 5th as an informational update, and the item is before you tonight for consideration in adopting a resolution to authorize staff to submit the land use plan amendment for coastal commission consideration. So with that, it is the staff recommendation that you approve the land use plan amendment and authorize staff to submit the document to the coastal commission before the end of this year for processing. And that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, we do have cards on this, so why don't we go ahead and let the public speak and then?
Can I ask one just clarification question?
Sure.
Real quick. I'm sorry, Leslie. Thank you very much for that. You made one comment that the general plan, the Centennial General Plan from 2014, had this designated or changed to a residential. My understanding was that in the 2014 general plan, it was mixed use, and then it was subsequently changed in 2016 as part of an update to that plan. Is that correct, or?
I'm not sure about that. I would have to defer to one of the other city staff on that topic.
Great. Thank you.
And the city staff here to defer to?
I believe that's correct. It was originally mixed use, then it was changed over the process of the general plan update process to residential high.
All right. With that, I'll open up the public hearing, and Adam Minnow will be first speaker, with Mandy Sackett following.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, city council members, citizens, and employees of the City of San Clemente. My name's Adam Minnow. I'm a resident in Newport Beach, a CPA, a certified public accountant in Newport Beach, and I'm here reading a message for a client of mine that couldn't make it here this evening. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I was actually, this is my first time, and I'm super impressed of what's going on here, the public involved, about the hospital environmental conditions, all of you, New Council members. You have a full load of work, and most importantly, gosh, who was it? Actually, two things. The choir teacher Sharon Evans deserves major commendation, commendments in the fifth-grade choir. It's spectacular, the resource that you have here, teaching these kids to sing, so. so, and what adorable kids. So thank you for having me. And then finally, thank you to Eric Sund and Judy Benson for their great financial report and the stewardship over the finances of the city. I also want to thank you for being transparent about doing the right thing on Agenda Item 70, the public hearing tonight, to consider an amendment to the certified local coastal program land use plan. Your staff did a great job in the report reiterating the city's goals, that is to support, I quote, "the promotion of visitor-serving land uses in the Pier Bowl area. Promoting visitor-serving land uses in the Pier Bowl area is important to all Californians and to the silent majority of San Clemente residents who want to use our beautiful coast. That is why helping more access to and services in our coastal area has been an explicit goal of our city leaders for decades. Yet, as your staff accurately summarized in its public hearing report, we haven't made much progress on that front, and they list reasons why that progress hasn't happened." I'm here tonight to humbly ask you for a simple thing, that is, to please ask your staff to add to the report language that reflects additional reasons why commercial land uses in this location have not proven to be either viable or sustainable. One added reason that has to be listed, one that I am determined that the coastal commission notes as well at their meeting in March, is that our city, like so many across the state, has not been able to use redevelopment monies collected to advance those noble goals of visitor usage we all agree on. Redevelopment has been a mess across the state for decades, and San Clemente has been no exception. That is why Governor Brown and the legislature pulled the plug on redevelopment as we knew it. Here in San Clemente, me and other Pier Bowl property owners have been waiting to partner with the city for years in building public-private partnerships to meet our agreed-upon visitor land-serving using the money already collected, yet the partnerships have not emerged. With the new version of the redevelopment emerging in California, it looks like we may have new and improved opportunities to finally create visitor-serving land uses we have wanted to create all along. All this means that before you move forward, please ask yourself to list the additional reasons why commercial land uses in this location have not proven to be either viable or sustainable.
I need you to wrap it up.
Yes, thank you very much for taking this opportunity to listen to me and my client, and for all the beautiful work that you do here.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Mandy, followed by Denise Ehrkraft.
Denise had to leave.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, good evening, Mayor Schwartz and council members, Mandy Sackett with the Surf Rider Foundation. I'm also a resident and homeowner here in San Clemente. As Surf Rider's California Policy Coordinator, my mission is to protect our state's ocean waves and beaches, and I work tracking local coastal program updates for coastal hazards across the state, and also other sort of coastal commission-related items, and so here sort of to talk to you about sea level rise and coastal hazards associated with climate change, which pose a really major threat to our coast. And in that vein, I want to ask, respectfully ask you to deny the proposed LUP amendment due to the proposed changes to the definition of major remodel in the long term. In the long term, the amendment would not be beneficial for homeowners or the city. We chimed in at the LUP, on the LUP update at the February Coastal Commission hearing, Surf Rider supported the Coastal Commission staff suggested modifications in their entirety. It's the Coastal Commission's job to ensure that the city's plan will be effective in protecting public resources over the coming decades, especially given the reality of our rapidly changing coastline. So the City of San Clemente's update is the first comprehensive LUP update to be certified by the Coastal Commission with focus on coastal hazards since the Coastal Commission's 2015 Sea Level Rise Guidance Document. And that's really important, because that's why not all LCPs have this sort of same definition of a major remodel, yet, but that's what we're working towards. And so the amendment, as suggested today, will greatly extend the lifetime of many, if not most, structures in the city. A house that was remodeled up to 49% last year could remodel another 49% after this LUP update, essentially a brand-new house, and would still be considered existing development by the city. So this is important, because only existing development is entitled to seawalls, and seawalls are important to Surf Rider. Seawalls exacerbate erosion, and they make our beaches disappear. There will be no public access without our beaches. And so a recent study by the Army Corps of Engineers predicts that 67% of Southern California beaches may disappear in a century due to sea level rise and coastal hazards threatening our economy and way of life. I understand our beach is almost entirely armored already up to this point, but this might not always be the case. The purpose of this land use plan is to lay out an intention and thoughtful long-term plan. It's important to have policies in place now that will be protective of public resources in the future, as conditions change. And so if the railroad, one day maybe it's moved, a knee-jerk reaction for coastal homeowners will be to protect their private property with seawalls. And we don't blame them, however, it's not fair that a handful of private property owners can disproportionately impact our public resources, and the rest of San Clemente residents rely on for recreation and economic benefits, spiritual connection views, property values, and more. We really have to take a long-term look at this. And so this amendment will create a situation where it will be more difficult to do smart adaptation planning in the future. Eventually, all of our precious beaches, coastal habitat access, and recreational opportunities will be lost. In just five more seconds, we would just encourage everyone to observe the king tides happening this weekend. High tide's going to be over seven, seven feet high, and will simulate about 1, 1.5 feet of sea level rise, so just, just sort of a glimpse into the future. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. But Denise?
She left.
She left, okay. Mark McGuire.
Thank you, Mayor Schwartz, members of the council, and I want to congratulate Councilmember Hamm on apparently being appointed chief and apparently having a new child, so I hope everything goes well with that, Chris. I want to say I support the definition change, that component of the LUP amendment, and one thing I'll just comment on quickly in regards is that it doesn't just relate to the homes on the bluff, it relates to many, many homes along the canyons that will not be affected by sea level rise. So there are a lot of properties that, there's a lot at stake with regard to that amendment, and so I would ask you to pursue that amendment with the commission. The second part, I would ask you to not pursue, and I'm just going to try to quickly go through some history here. For 22 years, the city had designated all of Coronado Lane as mixed-use, and when the Centennial General Plan was being considered, the city's Planning Commission specifically recommended, considered, and recommended that the entire street still retain that mixed-use designation. And indeed, the council initially adopted the general plan with that designation. Then in a 2015 cleanup amendment, the council changed most of Coronado to residential high, leaving just the Cove Resort property on Coronado as mixed-use. So neither my client nor I were aware of the change being considered as part of that cleanup amendment. It may have been that the council thought that they were making that change at the time that the Centennial General Plan was being adopted, but it was not made, and we were not aware of it at that time. We would have tested, we would have come to that meeting in 2005 and tried to make our case then. So what did we do? Subsequent to that, we started beginning a discussion with members of the council, knowing that the coastal land use plan was going forward to propose that the street go back to having what's in the specific plan, which is essentially both a mixed-use designation, but you could also do residential. Meeting with Councilmember Brown, I'm going to go quickly here, Mayor Brown at the time, in talking about that possibility, he said, well, what about doing just a bookend, maybe a couple of the parcels on the end similar to what we have on the Cove? And I said, well, our preference would be the entire street, but we would be welcome that if that's, you know, better than half a loaf is better than none. It was interesting, because that's ended up what the Coastal Commission ended up doing. They value visitor-serving commercial opportunities, and they made a suggested mod to do two parcels on the end of Coronado Lane to bookend with the Cove property on the north end. And that's what we think promotes coastal act policies. We also think that it's fair to the property owners that have invested over a long period of time. I'll just quickly comment about, there were, there've been existing buildings on those properties for a long time, so the notion that they would quickly convert to a commercial use is not that realistic, but there is potential in the future, there are becoming quite old properties to do some commercial uses. You know, but, and in particular, the Boutique Hotel is the most logical potential future use. I'm happy to answer any questions, too, if there are any, but thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Mark. We have no other cards, or any questions for our public? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public. And now, is anyone ready to chime in on this?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and support staff's recommendation, I think they did a great job, we've been working on this now for many years, so I'm ready to move on it.
Yeah, and I support most of it. I kind of like the compromise, though, of the bookends, where we have a property owner that is on the one end, opposite end of the Coronado, and is looking to maintain what has been on that property for most of its existence, which is the mixed-use. So I would, because I know that I believe a lot of the reasoning to go to the residential was because of traffic concerns, driving on Coronado, but I think just if we have the two bookends allow for what the use has been allowed for, and then to then just leave the street as they're saying about to leave it, and residential, that might be a good compromise and a way to go forward on this. So that's just my position.
Can we have staff come up to answer some questions? Carl, it might need to be you, okay? Because there are more to do with our planning, city planning. For mixed-use, what are the parking requirements? How would they be different than, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, than residential? Which is currently, what is there? What happens with the parking in the area? Because I didn't have time to look this up, so I think I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, but it would depend on the use.
Right.
It would depend on the use that's proposed, so the parking could be the same if it's designated mixed-use, but it's used the same way the residential high is being used with residential, like right now, being used for vacation rentals, the parking would be the same.
So the issue with that would be that these two parcels, everything's already built there that's mixed-use, correct? These two would be the two new? I believe every lot is already mixed-use, is what I'm trying to get at. So these would be?
Currently? I think they're mostly residential uses there, yeah.
I'm thinking of the Pier Bowl area.
Oh, sorry.
Everything that's already mixed-use is currently built. In addition, no?
The vacant lot.
I happen to like that lot as what they've done with it. So just in your opinion, would mixed-use create more requirements for parking than the residential that's currently there? Just?
It could, depending on what use the proposing hotel would be parked differently than the residential use.
So if, if we didn't change it now, and we follow the Planning Commission's recommendations and the general plan amendments that were already done, what would have to happen later? If that property owner had a great idea that they finally came up with it after 20 years and said, "I want to do this," what would, what would they need to do to do that if we kept it residential?
They could propose a land use amendment on their own, and a general plan amendment as well. They've, they've shown that they've developed rapport with coastal staff, so they might have support there for that, so they could propose that and go through the process.
What's the cost? What's a general plan amendment cost? It's just staff time.
Like a ballpark of fees? Well, we haven't done a lot of land use plan amendments, but it would be both of those, so probably something like $5,000 to $10,000 in fees, probably.
So that's what I'm remembering, that it's not that much to do, and I'm concerned with going ahead with this, that you're talking about trying to do a compromise, but it's, it's without looking at what this means, and that's what the council did and the Planning Commission did when it was changed, when we did the updates to the general plan, so because they can come back later and ask for an amendment, and if they come with a clear picture of something that they want to do, I think I'd be more inclined to stay with the course of what we're doing. I asked the applicant if they could come up with how we could condition this if we didn't do this, and we left it to what they had the Coastal Commission change it to, and I didn't get that. I'd like to see how we can limit what the commercial is that's in there and what's required without just blanketly saying this is mixed-use. A lot of thought and hours went into this, and they're saying that we changed it really fast, and I just don't remember that history, so that's my opinion on it, and as long as they can come back, I think that's a better option.
Dan? Sorry to jump in. So it also required environmental review, right, depending on what that required as part of that?
It could.
Yeah, it would, it definitely would, so. So I was on the Planning Commission, the General Plan Advisory Committee through this process, I remember these properties vividly in that discussion, and coming out of that planning process, and in 2014, when we did the Centennial General Plan, all of these properties were mixed-use properties, correct?
I believe so.
And then it was changed, I believe at the dais, a year later, through a general plan update as part of a 500-page change, is that correct?
I'm not familiar with that, but I think that's correct.
Well, I guess for me, where I come down on this, and I understand, Mr. Minnow, I read, I read your letter, I appreciated it, were, property owner wants these properties to be mixed-use, that's my understanding, and they were mixed-use, if he's to be believed, he didn't know that it was being changed, and where we're at in the process is this, this is going to go to the Coastal Commission, it's going to be reviewed, and they're going to make their case for this to be mixed-use, and they're going to come back, and we've still got to go through a whole specific plan process update for the Pier Bowl area. So what uses are going to be allowed, what conditions can be imposed, all of that is going to be a part of the process for the specific plan. And to the parking issue, we've deemed this a visitor-serving area, so if that property owner for these two properties wanted to go and make that entire residential unit vacation rentals, they could do that. And I assume that the parking would be commiserant with what hotel would be, which would be allowed under the mixed-use commercial zone. So I don't think I'm ready at this point to foreclose this option, and I remember talking about the bookend through the general plan process and all of it. This is not changing what can be done there, we've still got to go through further planning, my understanding, with the specific plan, so there's going to be ample time to limit and condition the types of mixed-use and commercial uses that we want there, I'm just not ready to foreclose it now. So I'm going to be supporting a mixed-use at that spot.
Yeah, so I got to correct the record first off, so I was through the entire General Plan Advisory Committee, I was there from start to finish, and I was in the group, the subcommittee, that talked about the Pier Bowl specific area, and initially, in the 1990 general plan, the entire area was mixed-use, and we recognized as a group that that never came to fruition. Adding to that issue is Coronado and Monterey are both one-way, very narrow residential streets, and continuing with that perception that one day this can be some grandiose commercial district is lying to ourselves and lying to the community. So we, as a General Plan Advisory Committee, made the recommendation to change it to residential high density. What happened behind the scenes with staff members that are no longer here is that they went and changed it behind our back, and when that information was brought to council, it was subsequently changed back to residential high, which is what the General Plan Advisory Committee recommendation was. I can't be supportive of it, I think a boutique hotel, which, if that's the case, I'd be supportive of that 100%, but giving us a mixed-use designation so we can continue down that path, I don't think is appropriate. Like I said, it's a high-density residential community that has two one-way intersecting streets, it's very different than the bookend theory on the other side, which has Victoria frontage. I just don't see it. Mark McGuire is a hired gun, he's been behind the scenes working on this issue from day one, from the moment he found out that the General Plan Advisory Committee changed it to residential high, and that's going to be his job moving forward, and I completely understand that, and that's the job he has to do, but for me, I just don't see it, it just doesn't make sense. So I'm going to be supportive of staff's recommendation.
I support retaining the mixed-use for designation, and I truly believe that I support the Coastal Commission recommendation to, just to support visitor uses in this Pier Bowl area. I think there's ample parking as well. I'd love to see another small hotel there or other commercial use there to bring tourism to our Pier Bowl area, and also, I'd love to see our city, I know someone alluded to it earlier, you know, more economic development, more partnerships. I know in the past, we had redevelopment funds, and that's why the Pier Bowl area looked so great, because of that in the past, but there's got to be another mechanism and more support from the city side, too, in that, so, but I will support retaining the mixed-use for designation.
So as the final reiteration? So as a final reiteration, I just want to make it clear that retaining this use doesn't mean it's going to become commercial. We've still got a specific planning process to go through, and there's going to be a lot of studies as part of that that we're going to go through. And if this doesn't work, if it's not viable, it's going to be very clear through that process. So I'd be perfectly happy letting it go through that and let the community voice their concerns and any issues that they have, and we'll go from there.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll give this a shot. So I'm going to make a motion, the City Council approve a resolution adopting the LUPA and authorize staff to submit the LUPA to the Coastal Commission for review and processing prior to the end of the 2018 calendar year with the modification that the two southernmost properties remain mixed use.
I'll second it. And I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Lauren, didn't see your vote either way.
Aye.
Okay, so it's, motion is carried, 3-2.
Next is a report from the Utilities Director concerning a proposed code amendment concerning solid waste management to require applicable businesses to comply with mandatory commercial recycling and mandatory organics recycling.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Next two items before you this evening involve amendments to city ordinances to comply with legislation adopted by the state. The proposed ordinances, revisions have been reviewed and are recommended by the Coastal Advisory Committee. And before I get into the first ordinance, I'd just like to thank Cynthia Mallett and Dan McIntosh, city staff, for their efforts on the revisions. In response to Assembly Bill 1826 that requires cities to implement organic waste diversions for businesses, restaurants, and multifamily complexes consisting of five or more units or businesses that generate four cubic yards of solid waste or more. If the ordinance is approved this evening by the city council, staff will coordinate and work with CRNR to educate customers over the next 12 months on the new requirements. This revision will also assist the city in meeting its required 75% diversion for solid waste out of the landfills by 2020. As a side note, our customers are doing an excellent job so far, and our diversions are over 70%. So hopefully, with this amendment revision, we'll get to that 75% by 2020. An additional note, the organic waste will be used by CRNR at their anaerobic digester in Paris, and they'll utilize that for electricity, and then also for the natural gases generated will fuel their vehicles and fleet. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions the council might have, and I have staff here available to answer any detailed questions.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment, support it, and then make a motion if there's no other comments. I just want to read to the community so they understand exactly what's going on here. I envision lots of emails of people being upset when this actually comes down the pipe. But here's a summary. Municipalities are required to comply with waste diversion laws adopted by the state legislature and administered by the California Department of Resources, Recycling, and Recovery, meaning that we don't have a choice in this matter. We're required to do it by law, and that's what I think is going to happen here this evening.
So in other words, if you're get-upset about it, call Sacramento, don't call us.
No, pending any other further discussion, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do I have a second from the motion?
I'll make the motion real quick. Introduce ordinance number 1666, entitled Ordinance of the City Council of San Clemente, California, amending Chapter 8.2a Health and Safety Solid Waste Management of the Code of the City of San Clemente, California to incorporate new waste mandates, city rules, and regulations. That's it.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hamm and a second by Councilmember Ward. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous.
I'd like to ask staff, I saw in the staff report that there's going to be a tour of the Paris plant. Could you put council on that? Just, I don't know if we can go, but...
Yeah, that'll be sometime after the first of the year, and we'll notify the council at that date. I have the next item as well.
Yes, this is a report from the Utilities Director concerning a proposed code amendment to remove the section that allowed for lawn irrigation runoff and amendment to explicitly state that irrigation runoff is a prohibited discharge to the storm drain system.
The second item for the council this evening consists of revisions to two separate ordinances to comply with the city's stormwater permit that prohibits the discharge of irrigation runoff. The proposed revisions are in response to review of all South Orange County city ordinances in June of 2018 by the State Water Resource Control Board. So before the council this evening, it's just a cleanup of two ordinances to define irrigation runoff as a prohibited discharge, and the city's existing ordinances allow for irrigation runoff in turf areas, so we'll clean up that. And I'll open it up to any questions from the council.
Okay, yeah, and we have no card. So any council members want to bring this up? By the way, this is, again, another item that's mandated. We don't have a whole lot of room to change.
The mayor, you want a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll move that we introduce ordinance number 1667 entitled in ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, deleting Chapter 12.16.080, Control of Irrigation and Stormwater, and amending Chapter 13.40, Stormwater Runoff Control of the Code of the City of San Clemente, California, to comply with the NPDES MS4 permit to prohibit irrigation runoff.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ward, a second by Councilmember Hamm. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous. You want to talk to us about the next one, too?
I'll leave that to Samantha.
Next is a report from the Assistant City Manager concerning an aquatics partnership application with San Clemente Aquatics.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Samantha Thomas-Vile, Recreation Manager. Before you tonight is a recommendation regarding the application for San Clemente Aquatics Team partnership. I believe the contents of the report summarize the extent of what a partnership entails and what that all means. For a little additional background, SCAT has been an outstanding partner for decades. I have files that date back into the 80s when they used the beach clubs. So they have been around for a long time. They've been a great supporter of youth swimmers in town. They've grown some really incredible athletes and into even our Triton High School program. So we consider them a valuable partner at the table. They are our only senior partner at this point in time. We only have one other aquatics partner, for your reference, it's a junior partner, and it's the Triton Water Polo Club. So the senior partnership does entail a little bit more lane allocations, it gives a little bit of a greater discount. And before you, you'll see there's a staff recommendation and a Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission recommendation, so I can speak to that briefly. And then I do have the head coach here as well, who can answer additional comments and speak to the commission's concerns as well. So the commission did review this. They saw some concern with the level of reserve funding that the organization currently has. They saw that as, you know, why are we subsidizing at such a great rate when you've got such a healthy reserve? And I will let your on speak to that directly, but from my understanding, the gist of it is they've tried very hard to build the reserve fund. Swimming, there's a lot that could go wrong in a swim meet or a swim team environment. So that's really to protect the organization. There's nothing in our partnership policy that states you can't have a reserve fund. So for that reason, the staff recommendation is to move forward with a three-year agreement as per the existing senior partnership policy. The BPR recommendation was to give them a one-year senior partnership with the want for the organization to come back over the next year and see where their reserve funds are at at that point, if they've been able to donate back to the city, or have they given more scholarships. There's a couple of details that the commission was interested in seeing, and they want to do that on a one-year basis. I can say that I have met with the swim team head coach. We're confident that, you know, if there's a need for aquatics, the swim team certainly wants to be at the table to see how they can assist, whether that's assisting with equipment purchasing or looking into some CIP projects that they could participate in. They were a great supporter in the build-out of the San Clemente Aquatics Center. They donated the scoreboard, items like that that are really used by the swim team, and if there's another need for it, they're certainly willing to come forward and partner with us, just as Little League did tonight. So with that, I'm happy to take questions, and like I said, I do have the head coach here as well to answer any other questions related to the organization.
Yeah, and Garan, I think, put in a card.
Yes.
So he's already here. Did you want to go ahead and speak, or did you just want to be available for questions?
I would like to speak, please.
Well, I'll go ahead and open up public input. Come on up.
Okay, good evening, council members. My name is Iran Westerland. I'm the head coach for San Clemente Aquatics. I've been that for seven years now. And last night, I just got back from California-Nevada Senior Sectional Championships. We got fifth place in the team standings among medium-sized teams. I'm asking the city council to grant us renewal of our three-year contract as a senior partner. After the last time, when we got the senior partnership, we lost pool space from 17 lanes from 3:30 to 7:30 per day, down to 11 lanes from 3:30 to 7 o'clock. So we lost space in there, and we still fulfilled the city criteria in all aspects with 90% somewhere with San Clemente residents and over 300 swimmers, with a base coming from previous year's lane allocations. So in October, together with the city aquatic staff, we regained some of the lanes at Ole Hanson Beach Club when that opened up again. So we are back up a little bit. To be able to fulfill the city membership criteria and develop our club further, I'm asking to renew our partnership with three years as the contract originally states, to give us the stability and a chance to plan ahead. And that's kind of the answer to the reserve question, to tell you the truth, because when we started with the new pool, we had seven, a lot of lanes and a lot of kids, and that, you know, the funnel has turned so that we have two, we had one lane producing swimmers for the older, more advanced swimmers, and that is an equation that doesn't add up. And that's the reason we have, we've been one coach short. I've been working double to make sure that we have economic strength to deal with whatever would happen, because we could never plan what we would get in since we didn't have this pool space. That is kind of the reason why I made these decisions, to work double myself and make sure we have enough so we can deal with whatever space we get in the pool. And that is kind of catch-22 in the whole situation with the senior partnership. We have to be 300 swimmers, and we're struggling really hard. I'm really managing staff, and there's no fluff anywhere. So that's kind of the reason why. And now we have, there you go, Ole Hanson has opened up, and we were hoping to get those lanes, and we're now working with city staff to make that permanent, because this is a permanent sport. These guys and girls train six days a week, 50 weeks out of the year, 18 hours a week. That's the job. So, thank you.
Does any council member have any questions for him? No?
Samantha, I got it. It's a comment, actually. So I've been doing these aquatic agreements for six years now, and this is the first time, you only had one card, right?
One.
This is the first time that the only speaker has been the program manager, is your on. So I just want to commend you on a job well done, and I'm going to be supportive of it.
I have one question, Samantha, about the Ole Hanson Beach Club and aquatics team use of that. How many days, how many hours?
So they're there currently from, I believe it's three to six. They actually stepped in at a time, and they're only using four lanes, so there are still lanes available to the public.
How many lanes are available?
There's six lanes total in the pool, and they use four of them most often. They stepped in at a time where they were actually one of our primary renters of the beach club. Since the beach club's opened, we've kind of managed different attendance. It's been a bit of a struggle, and our drop-in swim has not come back as strong as we'd like to see as compared to the Aquatic Center. People love the Aquatic Center. The avid swimmers have fallen in love with that center. So we have our beach club diehards, but they haven't come back as strong as they were when we closed many years ago, so to renovate. So the aquatics team came in, and they've become a regular renter. We see about $13,000 to $15,000 in revenue from them. That's just at that facility, so we see that as a huge win. They also rent the pool outside of its normal operating hours, so they do pay for an additional lifeguard to be on duty, and they rent the lanes per hour as well. So their usage doesn't impact the usage of the public. We're very cognizant of maintaining lanes available for public use, and that goes at both facilities.
Okay, we do have limited time for unstructured swim there, so that could be, you know, equating it to low attendance is probably not completely the whole story, because we should open it up more for unstructured swim, but I know the city hopefully will do that in the near future.
Sure, and we've looked at that, and we'll certainly continue to look at the operating hours for the beach club.
Because they would come if we had it available, especially in the summer months. But, okay, so there's not much impact, is what you're saying?
No.
Which is good, okay. Well, I certainly support this for three years.
You know, I'm inclined not to want to micromanage our partners, and I don't personally think that we need to alter the renewal of the contract from three years to one year, myself personally. Telling them they shouldn't have a large enough reserve, I don't, unless we're going to be funding it and we're part of it, that's, I don't think, something we need to be concerned about. We're concerned about how well they treat our facility, the fact that they're doing it for the community, where they're adding to the community, and we're seeing that sort of supportive service that way. So I'm going to be supporting the staff recommendation. With that, if there's no more comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I think I'm seeing a nodding head, so I'm going to read the first recommendation that staff's recommending. Number one, grant senior partnership status to San Clemente Aquatics with a three-year agreement. Number two, direct staff to return to council at a future meeting with the proposed three-year partnership agreement for approval.
Do I have a second? We have a motion by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Hamm. Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Motion carried unanimous.
Next is a report from the Assistant City Manager concerning consideration of recreation sports partnership applications.
Good evening again. So on the partnership train tonight, we are also presenting to you partnership consideration for San Clemente Little League, AYSO, and Elite Soccer League. The report, again, I think it breaks it down pretty clearly. We do have conflicting recommendation between staff recommendation and BPR commission recommendation. So I can speak to Little League first, and then I'll go through each organization if that works. And again, we do have representatives here from each organization also. So Little League has been an outstanding partner, again, exemplary. They always come up to plate, so to speak, no pun intended. Whenever we need anything for field maintenance or support within the community, if it's events or programs like that, they've been a longstanding partner, and we look forward to continuing to work with them as a staff body as well. They are very easy to work with and want to see the city thrive and baseball thrive as well. So we're, our staff is recommending and the BPR commission is recommending a three-year platinum partnership agreement with Little League. They meet all the qualifications, they're... They're golden in that sense. And that is also reflected in AYSO. And again, a very well-known organization, frequent user of our fields, they've been around for many, many years, served thousands of our youth for soccer. They are our biggest renter of our soccer fields at this point in time, and they have the numbers to support that as well. So again, the BPR Commission and staff recommendation is a platinum partnership agreement for three years as well. The last partnership for consideration is Elite Soccer League. And this is where the staff and commission recommendation vary. So Elite has been a gold partner, and they've, they've been great as a gold partner. The concern is that they structure their league differently from AYSO, which is what we're most familiar with. So the staff recommendation is to keep them at a gold partnership level for two years. The commission recommendation is to see them at a platinum level for a year, and then we can come back. The commission's concern being, and this is a unique thing, we've never had before, we've never had two sports at the same level competing for field space, essentially. So what that would look like, and staff have kind of come up with how we would do that scenario, be formula-based. If the council chose to have two platinum partners that utilize the same amenities, so to speak, it would be based on the total number of players, the total number of fields. And again, we always defer back to the availability of public use as well. So those are the kind of factors we would play into that formula. If that were the case, Little, I'm sorry, AYSO would still get a higher percentage of fields, because they have more players. So essentially, there could be some loss on Elite's end, that they might not get as many fields as they're currently getting. Again, we'd have to work through that formula. So the commission's want was to see that happen and play out over the next year, and if it's, if it's even possible. Or if it's, if it's too much work, and do we need to re-go to the, go back to the drawing board and see what that looks like? So that's where we're at. Again, I'm happy to answer questions, but I do have the organization representatives here as well.
Yeah, and we have a card from one. So we'll go ahead and open up, but carrying. And Michael Affleck.
I'm familiar with, most of you are familiar with me. This is, I think, our fifth year coming to the partnership table, and each year it's been better and better as we try to educate what we're doing here with Elite Soccer League. As I was coming in, I was just reflecting back, we've been in San Clemente now for 12 years. Our first fall season was in 2006. And we had, we started in Aliso Viejo in San Clemente. So we had two cities, 17 teams, and it was just a bunch of us got together, wanted to have a better recreational option for our kids. My youngest was a nine-year-old, or my oldest was a nine-year-old at the time. And so we created Elite Soccer League as kind of a way to give our kids the kind of experience that we wanted them to have. And we had no idea that it would kind of grow legs of its own and take off running. In this last fall, we had 140 teams. And over 600 of the kids from our program in the fall are from San Clemente. So San Clemente is very important to us. We're, we're a local organization, and we're actually structured the same way as AYSO in terms of our business structure, but it's different in terms of how we go about things. And what we've kind of been criticized for, which is, which is kind of strange to me, but our goal is to create an environment where the kids can progress together in soccer and be able to move to higher levels if they would like to, but not have to be split apart as a team. Because we recognize that there's more important things going on in the field than the soccer. Some of it is the friendships that you're building, and the confidence that you're building, and what you take with you to middle school. And what, what the current environment does outside of Elite is you go into recreational programs, and you have clubs that don't have recreational programs, that come and kind of tear those teams apart, take the best players and move. Our teams move together. There's always one or two that go and come, but they move together. And what we found is, is we've gone from being purely recreational to where now we're, I think for the fall, we were 71% recreational and 29% club. But these club kids are the same kids that were recreational, they've just become too good for that circuit and moved up. So we really give them an opportunity to progress, but really, the first five years, we were just recreational. So it shows how they've been able to grow together. And a lot of our kids now are on the San Clemente High School team, which is pretty exciting for us and for them. They've kind of been through the whole thing from when they were, you know, eight, nine years old, through now playing high school together. The recommendation from staff, and I only have a minute here, but the, we meet all the requirements. The one complaint that was in here from staff is that we have a 19% of our revenue goes to paying for administrative costs. And I just want to just, that's so subjective to use a percentage on such a small organization compared to an AYSO that's a $70 million a year organization. We have four members, and this will be 10 more seconds, four staff members that get paid, and we shared $159,000 was our payroll for 2016, which is what all the data's on. AYSO has, at their corporate intuence, they have five members that are over 100,000 administrators, and two that are over 250,000 alone. So it's so subjective to take a percentage and say, hey, we're not recommending them because they have such a high administrative percentage, and then compare it to an organization that they have three or four people making more than the entire staff at Elite, just seems, seems a little unfair. We're trying so hard to make this great for the kids. Nobody's getting paid millions of dollars at the backs of these kids. We're really just trying to create programs that give them an opportunity they don't have anywhere else. They don't have it in club, they don't have it in AYSO. They can start recreational, they'll clear through, so that's it, really.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm going to say the same thing, Samantha. It's the first time that the only speaker cards have been from the coaches or members of the league. So, great job, and I'm going to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation, unless there's any other discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other communication on the issues?
So I'll read in the record, so we can get it here. Move that we recommend staff's recommendation, which is, number one, grant platinum partnership status to American Youth Soccer Region 111 and San Clemente Little League with a three-year agreement. Two, grant gold partnership status to Elite Soccer League for two years, maintaining the current partnership levels three. Direct staff to return to council at a future meeting with the partnership agreements for approval. And before we vote, I just have to reiterate, Samantha, whatever you've done, it's magic. Please, please do it again in three more years, because this is way better this way than it has been in previous years.
Do I have a second for the rewritten, restated?
I'll second that motion.
All right, and I think Samantha's got some large football players out there tackling them as they walk towards the door and keeping them out of it. If there's no additional anything on it, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, unanimous.
Report from the Assistant City Manager concerning the possibility of suspending automatic increases to the sewer connection fee.
All right. Good evening again, Mayor and members of the city council. Michael Johnston with the city manager's office. That and before you is a follow-up item to the previous public hearing on the annual mitigation fee report. As a part of the city's mitigation fees, the city imposes a sewer connection fee on each new connection to the city sewer system. Currently, this fee is subject to an automatic annual inflator of 10%, which was implemented to account for increases in the cost of providing service. Right now, the city is reviewing its sewer connection fees and in the process of hiring a consultant to assist with the process. The consultant would analyze the fees and update them to account for current costs and expected growth of, or connection to, the existing sewer system. Any changes proposed by the consultant and recommended by staff would come back before the city council for approval. And so because the city is already moving forward with a review of the sewer connection fees, staff is recommending the suspension of the automatic annual inflator until the review is complete and the adjusted fees are brought back to the city council for consideration. And that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Move that we adopt resolution 1858, Title Resolution of the City Council, City of San Clemente, California, spending the automatic inflator to the sewer connection fees until they're reinstated by action of the city council.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hamm, a second by Councilmember...
Ferguson.
Ferguson. Go blank. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, unanimous.
Oral Communications, Part Two. I do have a card.
Open, and Tony Robelino.
We've spent a long time lately talking about James, I'd like an 18-month severance package, Maxinoff, that I'd like to recalibrate and refocus on the Assistant City Manager. The employee survey was completed a year ago, in December 2017. The information was presented to council by myself in September of this year, and I'd like to share with new council, again, some of the comments from the survey. They include things that say, no one wants to work here anymore. Employees are not valued and respected. Employees that live in San Clemente are taking similar jobs in different cities. City management has severely impacted morale at the city. Many very good long-term employees have left the city because of the ACM. There's a hit list that's referenced in multiple comments. City management started working here, the morale has gone downhill. James, control the ACM and stop the bully, stop the hit list. Get rid of the ACM. Counsel or get rid of our bully ACM. Stop attacking employees, stop the bully, show this all to council. The ACM is not a trusted individual, and people should feel free, there would be, or fear that there would be retaliation if some sort of, if something came up, depending on the issue. And this just goes on and on. And I'd like to reiterate that, there's a summary that I put together of alleged offenses by the ACM, using taxpayer dollars to play golf. In the comments, it states that he's got a vehicle stipend and use of a city vehicle. In my mind, it should be one or the other, but not both. I'd like perhaps the city manager to state on the record what's happening with the vehicle usage. The hit list, it's just unbelievable that that exists. Employees allude to living in fear, retaliation if they speak up to HR about the ACM. The ACM controls the city cameras instead of giving unrestricted access to the OCSD, which was confirmed tonight on the Facebook forum by the OCSD. I don't know why Chief Peters doesn't have access to the cameras. I'd like to know what the access is at the substation as well. What has been done? Many have stated the ACM is a liability to the city of San Clemente, and he's an at-will employee and can be fired for any reason without having to establish just cause. This is an opportunity for the city manager to begin earning back some trust from the residents of San Clemente after that severance debacle. I've put together comments that I'd like to distribute to council, so that you all have everything on the record. I've got five copies here. Pass that out, that would be great. I'd also like to make sure council's aware, and the residents of San Clemente, that I have a PRA pending on Mr. Sun's, the ACM, financial expenditures with the American Express. And I'd like to distribute that information as well. I think if we're all concerned about fiscal responsibility, then we need to know how that credit card's being used as well. Thank you.
City manager?
Nothing.
City attorney?
Nothing more tonight, thank you.
Okay. Update to council appointees to regional committees, commissions, and boards. Every year at this time, council updates its appointees. So I included in your packet the current appointees, so if you'd like to just run through it and make any changes. And just, just one reminder that the Orange County Fire Authority Director needs to be approved through a resolution.
I'd like to suggest that, I'd like to move over to the fire department and vacate the TCA, since I think Dan sitting in my seat might be a good idea.
Can we go in order?
Sure.
It's just, let's go in order, there's too many. We have to wrangle.
I need to be the lightweight. Could I get a three-minute break?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take a, I'll be a five-minute break.
Yes, I understand. Thanks. I think.
Okay. I think there was a comment about wanting to go in order.
Yes, because otherwise, I think it's a free-for-all. I want to make sure I don't get on things I don't want. So, let's go in order.
Go in order as far as the list goes, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Any changes for the capo unified? We've got Brown and Ward, and Brown's not here.
No. So somebody else needs to be on, or?
Are you wanting to stay on?
I'd like to stay on, only because when I was the mayor, they went through all their facilities. That was two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to help with that knowledge, but they, I think it's, they need another person.
Yeah, and it's just, it's an, it's an, as needed, right? There's not a scheduled meeting?
I don't, I'm not sure. I just go when they tell me to go.
Doesn't show meeting dates, so I'm assuming that's.
No, I remember they met every few months, like every three or four months or so. It wasn't frequent, I do recall.
Is this something you'd like to, you'd answer and do?
Sure, I'll volunteer. Sure.
Wait, let me write this down.
Next one, you want to swap?
And the next, sure.
Actually, thought he was the person this last year.
We were going to do it, but we never got around to it.
Oh, okay. So it's swapped?
So we're, so we're going to swap.
Okay.
Chris will be the alternate, and I'll do it.
You're going to stay on with the CEP?
On the CEP, yeah. I'll, I don't mind staying on it, but we need a new alternate.
I'll be the volunteer for that.
There you go.
It's very interesting.
Okay, so now we have the.
This one?
I have no issue staying on it.
Okay. We don't have that much to do on this one.
No.
Lori Gooch represents us for the Tulaga representative, and the other one, we don't have a representative yet. Chris, you'll stay on.
So we'll just leave it the way it is on, on the Conservancy, and then on the, the Chamber of Commerce?
I'd like to volunteer for that, if I may.
I think it's usually the mayor, too.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I was the alternate, and Tim was, was the member, so I'll be the member. You want to be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate. Good plan.
Okay.
You want to swap to DPA? I know you said you wanted to be part of it last year.
My plate is full, so I'll stay where it is. If you want to stay there, or if you want to swap, I'll swap.
I don't mind being doing it, but I know you expressed interest last year.
Yeah, I did, I just, but I just, I'm taking on a little bit more this year, so.
Okay.
Okay? So that'll stay.
No one else wants it?
Any of us want to step in on it?
Happy to, if you want to.
Okay.
Said yes, you want me to.
Sure.
Put Dan as the primary, that'll be.
Yeah, you're primary, Dan.
Okay.
And then Chris is the, is the alternate.
Okay, Fire Authority Board.
Yeah.
Steve wants it, it's his, so I move that we determine Mayor, what?
Nothing.
Okay.
You want it, that's great.
I move that we determine that, number two, I move that we determine that Mayor Schwartz will serve as the City Representative to the Orange County Fire Authority Board of Directors and adopt Resolution Number 18-59 entitled "A Resolution to City Council on Safe San Clemente, California, designating and appointing its representative to the Orange County Fire Authorities Board of Directors."
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous. And that puts us down to the Historic Preservation Ad Hoc Committee.
I'd like to be on it. It's one that's starting up, that's new.
Yeah.
So, we haven't said whether we're going to have another person on it, but if anyone else wants to do it?
I'd love to join.
Why don't we, you can be either an alternate or be a joint member if they, if the.
Sure, I'll be.
We're just going to start it, I don't, not until after the first of the year.
Yeah, that sounds great.
So joint members? Is that what I heard?
Two members.
Yeah, two members, okay.
Yeah. Okay, on the Insurance Authority, I was the alternate, and I'll, I'll go ahead and swing in.
Do we need to say that staff can be an alternate, too? Is that what that note says?
Yeah, why, we should make a note in the note, can't, let's, I, let's do a motion, say.
It's been passed, so I can just continue with that.
Yeah.
So staff members can step in, too.
Steve, you still willing to do a best man advisory?
Sure. It's a thrilling meeting, you should try it.
I've attended one, but I like every member that's on there.
Well, I do, too.
All good people.
All right, so.
Next ones are you guys.
Library Task Force, I was alternate, but I really don't have the time for that, so.
I'll volunteer.
Well, you might be the lead.
I might be the lead. I'm not sure I can do that one.
So you'll be the lead for now, and we'll come up with an alternate one, okay? Uh, I guess I'm on the mayor.
Yep.
Marine Corps, I'd like to step into that position. I have a really good relationship with the general of the base. I go to most events already, so.
Okay, that's good.
That's good.
Uh, O-DAC?
Oh, I'm willing to continue those.
Okay, and who'd like to take over my place as alternate?
I'd love to.
Okay. And then we have the Water Agencies.
Oh, that's the same thing, I'll do that one.
You'll do that, too, yeah, and then Laura will follow.
Sure, sounds good.
OCA Transportation Planning Workshop.
I'll do that, I'll take Lori's spot.
And then Public Safety Task Force isn't something that's on?
But I would like us, we need, and I've got it in my notes, we talked about it last week, or actually Lori mentioned it, our going-away thing, but I think.
I think we have to talk about it to bring it back.
Yeah, so.
Don't we? So, for another time?
Yeah, why don't we just notate the staff to get it on the agenda for future time regarding this, okay?
Okay.
Then we'll go over what the objectives were, remind us.
Right, and I think we, we can tweak it a bit, and try to establish that, no, it's not a Q and A, but we can figure out a way.
Yeah, you might, since you were both on it, you might have better suggestions on that.
Careful.
Pure Bill Association, Chris.
I think it's going to be right up Dan's alley. I'll jump in.
Okay.
Happy to.
And then, I don't think the DCEL, there was really anything.
I was never even notated.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's not a committee anymore.
No.
It could pop back up.
Joanne?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I think it's.
And same thing with San Replenishment, did we ever, did we ever do anything?
Sad to say, yeah, I had to, I had to go to DC for a trip for one of those, so if you want to swap, and you can be lead, I'll be the backup, and we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay.
SCAG, I guess.
That's just a once-a-year.
Yeah.
Thing. I did it last year, it's a good thing to go to, but anyone that's actually on TCA should probably go to that. So if you want to wait till after we decide that, to decide SCAG, it's only a once-a-year.
Yeah, why don't we do that? We'll come back to SCAG after we do the TCA.
Okay.
Social Services Community Service Budget Committee.
I'll volunteer for that.
Okay. South County Watershed.
Was that anything?
No.
I think it's as if it comes up, so, I don't know.
I've, I've been having staff cover that.
That works.
Torrid Subcommittee, we have to come back on that. And then, we can talk about.
TCA.
So let's talk about that. I've been on TCA for four years, and I did both for a while, and then Steve came on and did it. I think it could be a good strategy to change faces, so I'd like to step off, and I suggest that Dan go on that. I'd like to shake it up there a bit. I'm proud of where we are and what we've accomplished, I think we're in a good place, but I think it's a good time to do that.
I appreciate that. I think I'm going to have to take over the San Joaquin, I'm going to take Steve's role there, because we talked about that.
Yeah, he can't, I think he can go.
I don't want to leave him hanging.
Because he's hung up on, he's with the, I think he has to be on San Joaquin.
Yep.
Why?
Because, is, doesn't he end litigation with the other one?
Well, okay, but I think we could, we have time to figure that out, because the first meeting's not until February 14th. So I'd like to look into it, because you ran on that, fighting the Toro, so I think that this is a good period of time to take.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, and I could, I don't have to go, too. Ferguson, Laura, would you like to go, or?
Yeah, if you don't want to be on, then Laura can take you.
Chris?
FETCA, and I'll, I'll take over San Joaquin.
Perfect.
Sounds, sounds great.
Very good.
Okay.
Just sad to see you stepping down.
I'm not stepping down, I just think it's a good, shake them up.
She can beat them up from the.
And I can.
She can walk in.
I would enjoy that.
They get more talking ability from the floor than we do from, from the dais. Okay, so now we want to move back up.
And this, just so I understand, so I prepare this correctly, so Councilmember Ferguson is doing the Foothill Eastern?
Yes.
And are you doing the alternate?
No. Oh, alternate?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's usually.
Or is there no alternate?
There's going to be no alternate, they're going.
It's usually the other member who's on the other board, because.
Will be the alternate in case. So, no, I won't be an alternate, it'll be between Dan Bane, Al San Juan.
Maybe it's a part of, or an hour part of whatever.
No.
Okay, so then, San Joaquin would be Bane-Ferguson. Okay, got it.
And let's now, now move back up to.
SCAG.
The Transportation Work, no.
No, it's just SCAG.
SCAG.
And that's just a good, you know, that's the Association of Governments, you know, where you talk about transportation, it's just a good thing to go to.
It's all due down.
It's actually a good group of people.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I'll be alternate on that, in case, okay?
And so the Torrid Subcommittee, then, I assume should be me and Laura.
Yeah.
Wall of Recognition's a pretty fun one, if anybody wants to take it over. It's actually, it's actually pretty cool, because you get to go, anytime anybody gets nominated, you give them a plaque, and it's actually a really cool event. I'm down for, I think I'll stick here, maybe. Been a while, it's been a long time.
Well, I don't mind swinging over there.
Okay.
Probably Jim did it for a while, Everett?
Everett?
And you took over?
Oh, that's right, yeah, so I've only been doing it for like four years, so.
Yeah, I'll swing over there.
Seems like it.
Yeah.
And what about Vector?
No, we don't change that, right?
Right, and, and we got the, okay, and the, the GPA for, we got that, okay.
Mayor Schwartz, on the Torrid Subcommittee, I think the recommendation until the new Council gets settled in is to keep that open. We don't, we don't want that to be a standing committee, so is it okay if you just defer action on that, keep that one open?
Sure, we can.
And that'll be ad hoc as needed, and then we'll just check in with you on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
So that would be, so line, just on the.
That's true, it functioned.
As our own, as our own Subcommittee, so just.
It wasn't on last year, it wasn't on.
Yeah, just eliminate that for now, yeah, just.
Yeah, I think that's better, thank you.
Okay.
All right, any other comments or anything on this?
Nope.
Madam Clerk, have we got that done?
Yep, okay. Next item is consideration of Nuclear Regulatory Commission letters of November 28th and November 29th relating to the results of a routine inspection, as well as a special inspection, in response to the misalignment of a loaded spent fuel storage canister at Song's.
Looks good to me.
I don't have what we're talking, what?
You agendized it, I think you put it on.
Oh, I sent them, and I didn't get a copy, oh, there we go. Yeah, I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention. We got a really thin response regarding what occurred down at San Onofre and the accidents. Bottom line is, is that there, we haven't got a real, good, firm, definitive response as of yet, and I was disappointed in the last panel, but we are continuing to go back to Southern California Edison in regards to, where I have a problem with is the fact that city of San Clemente being so adjacent to the site, as well as the county and everyone else, were not notified immediately when that action occurred, and so we have communications going as to why and wherefore, and to improve on that. And of course, we're still working on the problems we have with it being a storage site at the south end of our town, so we have a lot of moving parts in this. So I just wanted to keep and put this in the record, and keep everyone abreast, that the panel is actively working, trying to get information from both the Nuclear Regulatory Agency, as well as Southern California Edison. We get pieces of it, portions of it, but nothing has been complete and concise, and nor have they shown us any resolutions or resolving some of the issues that we all are aware of. So I don't want to go into the details regarding the broken pieces that fell off, or the slippage, or what else is going on or remaining, just to say that they're talking about starting back up again on the storage within the next six, eight months, and it takes a good year or more to get it all moved. And that's just moved from wet storage to dry storage. So I just want to put that out there, put this out there, make everyone aware of it. And we have a target on it, and we've got meetings, next meeting, I don't know, I think it's in at least two and a half months. All right, and so we do have a card open up, and Mr. Stones, sir.
Thank you, City Council for letting me speak tonight. Mayor Schwartz, I want to thank you for your strong presence on the CEP, standing for safety, when I think it might be clear to many of us, after just a few meetings, especially the last meeting, that the NRC sent someone who had no idea about the last inspection, was completely incompetent. It was, unfortunately, from my perspective of dealing with the NRC for many years, it's very typical, and we won't ever get real solutions. So I would propose to the city that they support Residents Organized for Safe Environments proposal that we've put to California Edison for real-time independent radiation monitoring that is accessible to the public. Mayor Schwartz and I went to a meeting with Donna Boston of the Orange County Emergency Preparedness Team, and she'd stated that they had been trying to get a hold of this information from Edison for 10 years, and they did not have it. But I've been out there three times now with my little radiation monitoring, and I've discovered higher than radiation levels than they've ever let on, and to that end, they have now agreed to give this information to Orange County and San Diego Emergency Preparedness Team. So I would like to propose that the city put out a strong statement that independent radiation monitoring with access to the public needs to be forthcoming by California Edison for the good of, and for the good of our county and San Diego County as well, because with the lack of NRC intervention and inspection, which gets worse as every day goes by during the decommissioning process, they are less involved, not more involved. We did get some vague promises from the NRC at the last CEP meeting that they were going to watch more often out there, but there's nothing in writing about that, and there's no proof that they've done that in the past.